Our first item of business to review and approve minutes, we do not have minutes at this time to approve. Next item of business to review bills. First bill is from GZA Geog environmental Incorporated for one Greenbrier Drive in the amount of $2,663.17. All the rest of them are from Graves Engineering. One is for two Wesleyan Terrace Site Plan Review, $1,251. Another from Graves, two Wesleyan Terrace, second site plan review, $599. Another one for one to seven Maple Avenue Site Plan Review, $2,832.66. The next from Graves is four forty Hartford Turnpike, third site plan review for $828. Another from Graves Engineering for four twenty Boston Turnpike, second site plan review for $1,091. And the final for Graves Engineering for thirty-four to thirty-six Harrington Avenue, Site Plan Modification Review for $156. Total amounts to $9,420.83. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the expenditures as just read by the chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. While that's going around, I'll look for board member comments. Mr. Rowe?
I have no comments this month, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jerry?
No comments this month, thank you.
Mr. Roto-Lakis?
No comments this month with Mr. Chair.
Mr. Thomas?
I have no comments, sir.
I would like to make a comment. I just want to acknowledge and thank Karen Pulito for her tremendous amount of community service, most recently as Lieutenant Governor for the past eight years. I think in addition to that, she's been really much a lifelong community service representative from every imaginable post, town meeting, planning board, I mean, Board of Selectmen, obviously state rep, and now Lieutenant Governor. So I just want to wish her well, and her and Steve finally have some time to get a little bit more together, because it's a very busy job, I imagine. So I just want to say thank you to her, and wish her well in her next endeavor.
Steve, thank you. I know she's got more time, so I won't have to relay. I think she's watching.
Very good. Thank you, Karen. Okay. And Mr. McGoldrick, do you have any questions, I mean, any comments at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay. Did you have something on?
The bills.
Oh, thank you. All right. Well, that brings us to our first public meeting. It's a new public meeting for a proposed building location change and setbacks, request for de minimis change. Mr. Roto-Lakis will be recusing himself. Mr. Ricker?
Do you want me to put the board up?
You can, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. For the record, my name is Richard Ricker. I'm the attorney for Cornerstone Bank with regard to this request. As you may recall, we did have a previous plan approval for the site at 195 Main Street. Now, because of the minimal changes that were made as a result of our settlement of an appeal to the ZBA, we've moved the building further away from the easterly sideline. It went from sixty-eight point eight feet to eighty-eight feet. The building front has, the parking lot has moved ten feet closer to Main Street. There's still plenty of depth there. And the retail building, the secondary building, remember, we talked about two phases to this building. The secondary portion was narrowed up in order to shrink the size of the building from forty-eight hundred and fifty square feet to forty-five hundred and thirty-three square feet. So all in all, we moved the building a little further away from the residential abutter. We shrunk the size of the building. We shrunk the height of the tower portion of the building, and we changed the configuration of the parking in the front of the building in order to accommodate the narrowing of the retail portion. So I would ask you respectfully to consider this a de minimis change, because it is really for the benefit of the neighbors. In every way, shape, or manner, it is beneficial.
Thank you. Mr. Jerry, any questions or comments?
I don't have any.
Mr. Rowe?
No comment, but just wondering what made the increase in the impervious area? I mean, the building is shrinking, everything is lesser in footprint, but why was there an increase in the impervious area?
It's because that parking area out in the front was pushed out towards the street a little bit, so it was five hundred feet of additional impervious area out in front.
Oh, okay.
But as Mr. Granier points out in his report, there is no impact on the onsite drainage.
Thanks, Chair.
No questions? I don't have any questions, given that this is the result of the appeal and the agreement from the appeal. So I feel that's probably, it falls under the de minimis. Does anybody have any other questions or things that it does not?
No.
Good to meet you.
Stand a motion?
I move that we approve or we approve the changes and consider them as de minimis to the Cornerstone Bank at 195 Main Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I wish I was here to collect Mr. Graves' checks.
Okay.
A little bit of work, right?
Our next item of business is another new public hearing, public meeting, sorry, not a meeting. This is for the Edgemere Crossing, proposed change to basins, request for de minimis change, the locations seven hundred, two hundred, and two twenty-eight Hartford Turnpike. Mr. Roto-Lakis will be recusing himself from that as well. Please introduce yourself.
I've got some packets here for you guys. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is John Ralph from Ojo Connell Associates. We're here requesting for a de minimis change to basins four and five of the Edgemere Crossing Site. The basins are located on the west part of the signs from the commercial basins that are onsite. There will be no changes to the buildings, streets, sidewalks, et cetera. In addition, we've also received approval from the Town Engineer and Conscom. So we're changing the basin's classification from an infiltration basin to a wet basin. This was due to the fact that over the summer, even in the drought conditions, there was standing water. So what we had done is we had raised the outlet orifice to hold the two times the water quality bond, which is required from a wet basin to an infiltration basin. And our peak flows infiltration and water quality still remain the same and meet stormwater standards from Massachusetts. So, you know, effectively, no real changes. So that's why we're requesting for de minimis change.
And if you were not to do what you're planning on doing, what would that, what problems would that cause?
So the problems, we wouldn't be, we would not be complying with the stormwater standards from the classification from an infiltration basin. We're not getting the infiltration to treat water quality. A wet basin has to have standing water and a permanent pool, which are required, but in the handbook, chapter two, be empty stormwater control. So, you know, to get that water quality before it's discharged into the wetlands on the west side by Flint Pond, we wouldn't get those water quality that we need to discharge. So.
All right. Thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Rowe?
I was wondering, like, why isn't the infiltration rate as predicted? I mean, originally, they were supposed to be infiltration.
Yes, soil tests were done at that site.
And even in a dry weather year this year, if it's not happening, what may have been the problem there?
So soil testing was done onsite. This is a bit of a gray area, but they used the basin as temporary sediment controls. So we're thinking that silt and other things that went into the basin to not provide the infiltration we need when the test pits were done at the time. So that's why we're reclassifying, to still get the water quality we need while still, you know, maintaining the quality and peak flows and infiltration, so.
Thank you. Mr. Jerry?
Just to confirm, and I assume this is the case, but this reconfiguration will support the piece that has yet to be developed as well, right?
Correct. From the, this is an out, commercial out parcel, that's to the west of that basin five, that will also meet the requirements for peak flows, water quality, and stormwater. So the modification to the outlet control structure will be raising the orifice so that more can be stored from that wet, that permanent pool. And then still, and the three outlet control structures on that large basin will still control, retain, and convey stormwater from the basin.
That's all right. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
I'll sit.
Okay. I don't have any questions either. Leave it to the board. Do we feel that this falls under a de minimis change?
I think so.
I do.
I do as well. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we consider the changes to be de minimis to one seventy, two hundred, two twenty-eight Hartford Turnpike Demula Supermarkets Incorporated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. Our next item of business is a continued public hearing for proposed collision and collision center and retail building, site plan approval, MAG RE Holdings, eight hundred Boston Turnpike LLC, for location four twenty Boston Turnpike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Richard Ricker, and I'm an attorney with law offices eleven Maple Avenue. I'm here representing the applicants, and I'm here with Garrett Horstfall from Kelly Engineering Group, who has been here with us for every hearing and has worked on the plans. I believe the last time we were in front of you, there were some comments you wanted to review from the responses from peer review, and that is why we closed. Other than that, there's nothing new, as far as I know. We've finished conservation, we've gone through the ZBA. That decision has been recorded, so I think we're ready to go.
Okay. That being said, is there any comments from the board first? Mr. Rowe?
No comments.
Mr. Jerry?
No comments.
Mr. Roto-Lakis?
I'll sit.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on this matter? Not seeing any hands. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing on the site plan approval for four twenty Boston Turnpike.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So before us, we have a draft decision. Pretty straightforward. The waivers, which probably were the waivers. First waiver was on, for item A, Article Four, Section One, G sixteen of the Rules and Regulation not to provide the location size and sketch of all proposed signs. For the public's knowledge, in many cases, the building department would review all signage after the fact, and that's pretty common for us, so I don't feel that that's a major issue. Anybody have any questions about that?
No questions.
Item B talks about Article Four, Section One, G ten of the Rules and Regulation Site Plan, not to show all buildings within two hundred feet of the property line, given the fact that this property wasn't existing, deplorable, conditioned.
We waived that anyway.
We actually.
Oh, you, did you waive that?
Yeah, we actually waived it.
Just Garrett Horstfall from Kelly Engineering Group. So passed in the November response back to the town, we submitted an exhibit which showed all of the locations, so, and as part of our request back to the town, was to, you know, withdraw that waiver request. I believe the town planners review did not support the waiver, so we provided the documentation to not seek that waiver anymore.
So that's, we've asked to withdraw that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Item C is Article Five, B five of the subdivision rules and regulation to reduce the binder section of the pavement to one and a half inches from the two and a half inches required for standing duty pavement, and from two and a half inches to two inches for the heavy duty pavement. Any questions or comments from the board on that?
No questions.
I mean, that's, your parking lot, I guess, you give you what thickness you'd like. I don't see a major issue for that one myself. So given that, is there any other questions or comments relative to the decision itself?
No.
Okay. We want to entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize Mr. Thomas, the clerk, to execute the decision of the planning board regarding application for site plan approval for twenty Boston Turnpike, MAG RE Holdings, eight hundred Turnpike LLC, inclusive of the waivers relative to the size of the signs and binder thickness.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're all set.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
How easy do it now? Want to do it now?
No, we can do it now.
Okay. The boss said after.
Thank you.
I don't know if we have to change it because of that waiver.
Okay. Our next public hearing is a continued public hearing for one to seven Maple Avenue Beale Commons Site Plan Approval and Special Permit, Shrewsbury Haskell MM LLC, location is one to seven Maple Avenue. The applicants, please introduce themselves again. Yes?
If I can make a brief comment at the beginning, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Mr. McGoldrick, so if you could just hold off for one moment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just have a brief kind of message to relay. So at the planning board's December first, twenty twenty-two, twenty-two meeting, there was a lack of clarity surrounding the specific quantum of vote the board should use in rendering its decision. According to the Massachusetts general laws, a simple majority vote will be required for the issuance of this special permit. Our office reviewed this matter in coordination with town council, the town manager's office, and the zoning enforcement officer. In twenty twenty-two, the Massachusetts General Court enacted revisions to Chapter Forty A of the general laws, including a revision to reduce the quantum of vote required by a special permit granting authority to issue a special permit for certain types of developments. One of the identified types of development includes mixed-use development meeting locational and affordability requirements. The proposed project is a mixed-use development, is located in the center of commercial activity within the town center district, and is subject to affordability requirements designating a minimum of ten percent of units at eighty percent area median income. Therefore pursuant to the revision of Mass. General Law Forty A, Section Nine, the issuance of a special permit for the project requires a simple majority vote by the planning board. The revisions have been acted as a state mandate and are not the subject of local jurisdiction. Details have been provided for all in attendance through the handout on the table at the door. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The applicants, please introduce themselves.
My name is Taylor Bearden. I'm a partner at Civico Development, one of the joint venture partners that is proposing this project. Laura, can you?
Sure. My name is Laura Nospe. I'm a landscape architect with Ryan Associates.
Eric De Bruhl, associate with Boulder Engineering Site Civil.
Okay. So we're having some technical issues. The projector is not showing the presentation after the first few seconds. Any comments from technical support here? Okay. It'll go away in a second. Yep. It seems, it seems to work for a couple seconds and then goes away. Sam, do you want to try it? I don't know if I have, do you want to bring your computer here? Okay. Well, it's working.
We're getting closer.
Working?
Don't move.
May we?
Please.
Okay. Great. Thank you for your patience. So again, my name is Taylor Bearden, partner at Civico Development. We've been before this board before, and my intent here is to review a number of items as were requested by staff. In particular, to go over a brief introduction of the project for those in the audience who may not have been here before, and then to review at the request of town staff, the site plan, and a review of the Graves Engineering comments, as well as the fiscal and economic impacts of the project, and then follow with some other comments we have from engineering and landscape. So the development team is a joint venture between Civico and Greenlee Development. Four of us are here tonight, Alex, Brady, Andrew, Consigli, and me. We're all here for questions. You have seen us all in some iteration for a number of meetings now. People on the supporting consulting team who are available for questions include architect, engineer, landscape architect, and traffic engineer. So all members of the team will be here and available for questions. So to review again what we're in front of the board for, we've requested the following permits. We are seeking a special permit for mixed-use development for a vertical mix that includes nine or more residential units. In addition, we're seeking a special permit for height over thirty-five feet but less than forty feet, and front yard and side yard setback special permits, as well as parking in the side yard buffer. And then, last but not least, site plan approval. So a quick overview of the project, again, for the benefit of the public, here we have fifty-five apartments proposed, one and two-bedroom units. Seven of those units, representing twelve and a half percent, will be affordable at or below eighty percent of area median income. There is approximately seven thousand seven hundred square feet of retail, and most of the assumptions that you will see in this presentation are based on the assumption that there will be a cafe, a specialty market, and a restaurant in that retail space. But to be clear, we are not proposing any specific retailers or tenants in that space for the purposes of this presentation. They, at the Wesleyan Street and Haskell Street intersection, there will be a point-seven acre public park that is known as the retained parcel. That parcel will be deeded back to the town at the conclusion of the project and will be ceded and will be in town ownership in perpetuity. The total site plan includes one hundred twenty-six parking spaces allocated to the residential and the commercial spaces, in addition to twenty parking spaces that are allocated exclusively for public use, and then an additional ten parallel parking spaces on Haskell Street, which will be partially on the property with an easement granted to the town. And lastly, we will be preserving the Veterans Memorial in its current configuration on Maple Ave. So I'll run through now the entirety of the Graves comments, just for the benefit of the board. We have them listed here with a format of pending and resolved. So we've generally grouped these comments so that the site plan revisions will be less iterative and more all at once. So you're, before the next meeting, you will see an updated package with a site plan that reflects many of these changes. And we're hopeful that any other comments that come up tonight can also be integrated into that. So from a formatting perspective, anything listed here in bold is something that we'll address later in the meeting. So most of these, again, grouped and will be shown in a further plan revision, some of which were comments by Grave Engineering that do not require a response. Those are listed as resolved. So you will hear later about the parking report that was circulated to town staff earlier today. I understand you will not have had the opportunity to see that, but that's now in the town's hands, and we'll look forward to feedback at our next, at our next opportunity. Generally, just to run through some of these that are still pending, we are preparing a photometric plan to be provided. That was a comment brought along by Graves. Their test pits have been performed, but the analysis has not yet been provided back to the town. And generally, you know, there will be updates to the plan for a number of kind of procedural or administrative items that include some of the stormwater comments by Graves. We have a number of other items here, and you'll notice here in the next section, we also list town, town staff comments, which do overlap with the Graves Engineering comments, but are generally all pending with discussions happening with the town, either via our engineering department or directly with the town planning staff. So I'll bring your attention to the two items at the bottom. So one item there showed transition from public parking to retained parcel. That was something that had come up in previous discussions, and that is at the end of the, at the end of the parking lot abutting the future retained parcel for Wesleyan Street. We were advised by planning staff that they were discussing internally relative to what the appropriate treatment of that is, as it relates to the accessible parking spaces, and so we're waiting on feedback for that, but we're hoping that that will be integrated if any changes are proposed in the next iteration of plans. Lastly, Laura here will share with you our treatment of the Maple Ave sidewalk, which was other comments received relative to the guidelines for sidewalks, and how that intersects with the World War One memorial, considering that we aren't proposing moving the memorial, but the sidewalk still has to be in compliance around that memorial. We've made a couple of other changes here relative to the request of town staff to upgrade the chain link fence and include screening. Laura can give a quick update, but there was some public comment at the last meeting about a Chase Street abutter relative to buffering and existing trees. So we've had preliminary conversations with the gentleman who represented the abutter, and those are in no way concluded, but just wanted to bring to the attention of the board that that abutter has received the proposed changes that you will see tonight already, and hasn't had the opportunity to comment, but that conversation will be ongoing. And then, lastly, there was another comment relative to pedestrian access or egress across the entry exit on Haskell Street. So what we are proposing is now to have a continuous concrete sidewalk across, across the entry, to provide sort of a visual delineation of materials for pedestrian vehicular separation. So what I'll do now is run through the parking report, which, as I mentioned, has been shared, although I understand you haven't had the opportunity to review it. We do have Maureen here from McMahon, who will be able to answer detailed questions. My purpose here is to give a quick overview of exactly what the findings were, and to introduce kind of what we shared with town staff earlier today. So generally, in response to kind of process, the town center, Town Center Zoning District has a slightly different treatment of how parking requirements are handled, and basically the impetus or the onus is on us to demonstrate what the parking demand will be based on the proposed uses on site, and to use the base zoning in the rest of the Shrewsbury zoning code as a sort of basis of reference, but not necessarily to adhere strictly to that code. So the townwide parking minimums in general should be used for reference, which I'll show here. So McMahon, our consultant, has produced this report, and has applied some time-of-day adjustments to the residential and commercial uses, which is specified as the process that we're supposed to go through in order to propose the parking mix that we think is appropriate for shared parking. And McMahon has, has used ULI's Shared Parking Manual to put some numbers to our expected uses. And again, as I had mentioned earlier, all of our assumptions in this presentation are based on that, that assumption that we'll have a cafe, a restaurant, and a specialty market, which, as I have mentioned in previous meetings, is sort of the ideal mix that we think will be a good use of the space and will create a positive environment for residents and other visitors in the town center. Considering that we obviously don't want competing uses there, we'd like things that create a sort of general active use throughout the whole day, instead of concentrating uses only at, you know, morning, noon time, or evening. So the summary of McMahon's Shared Parking Report is that parking demand will be met by the one hundred twenty-six parking spaces that we have dedicated to the project. Just for purposes of clarity, I should mention that that excludes the twenty public parking spaces that are being allocated for general town center use, as well as the ten parking spaces proposed on Haskell Street. So this analysis, as shown in, summarized in this next table, is exclusive of those additional spaces. Just want to bring that to your attention, considering that represents another thirty unallocated parking spaces that will be available on the site. So the purpose of this table is, is for summary purposes, just to compare the base zoning requirement in the left side column, and then compare that to the data that McMahon prepared in the subsequent three columns that show average weekday morning demand, weekday evening demand, and then Saturday midday demand. And if you'll prepared in the subsequent three columns that show average weekday morning demand, weekday evening demand and then Saturday midday demand. And if you'll look on the top row on the left side, again, that corresponds to our residential use, the fifty-five residential apartments between one and two bedrooms and the retail use is what I refer to as specialty market, cafe, obviously cafe and then the restaurant space. And so if you look at that total row in the middle of the table, if we were to strictly adhere to the base zoning requirement outside of the town center district, those uses would require one hundred thirty-five parking spaces. Now, when you look at the shared parking analysis, looking at those columns from weekday, morning, evening and Saturday, the range of total parking spaces required are between ninety-two at the lowest, which is the morning weekday demand and then one hundred twenty-seven, which will be the Saturday peak at midday when a larger number of residential parkers are on-site as well as a, the largest number of both cafe and retail users during the course of a week. So the final row on the bottom represents sort of the over-under, the, the net deficit or the net increase in available spaces. And you'll see there that in the highest intensity period, which is Saturday midday demand, the one hundred twenty-six parking spaces is just one parking space shy of the expected available use. Next, what we'll do is I'd like to hand it off to Laura for a moment to talk through a couple of slides relative to the Maple Ave streetscape and landscape plan. Laura, I'll toggle slides when you wish.
Okay, great, thank you Taylor. So this was, these two different plans represent our revised interpretation of the town guidelines and how they apply to the Maple Ave streetscape. We initially, our initial pass really was trying to use the existing memorial to set some of the dimensions based on our desire not to try to squeeze too close to that memorial, but in speaking with town staff and going back through the standards, we took another pass at this and have incorporated a few changes. Primarily, what we've done is we've created a more generous sidewalk along the curb edge to give a bit of a buffer between the cars and the pedestrian realm. We've moved the street trees to the curb edge, creating some larger areas for tree pits which we can extend along the curb edge with some permeable paving or an alternate sort of paving material which enhances that buffer. We've changed the relationship from the sidewalk to the upper terrace. We've made a single point of entry there which creates a larger area for planting as well as some separation between the uses of that terrace and the pedestrians. We've created a stronger connection between the sidewalk and the parking lot by incorporating a path between the parking and the building. We've, at the sort of southern end of the site, we've incorporated an additional pedestrian access point into the residential unit using a sloped walkway and we've reduced the size of the residential terrace as well. And this allows us to respond better to some of the existing utilities, the existing lighting, the existing crosswalks and allows us to create, which we think is a better pedestrian realm while also respecting the existing memorial. Here's some sections that show kind of the relationship dimensionally between the curb, the sidewalk and the terraces. You can see that we have some planting along the edge to create a buffer. We have the existing memorial planting and then a slope between the sidewalk and the residential terrace at the bottom of the plan. So this is our proposed revision in response to comments from both the town and some of the comments from the public.
Laura, I'd just like to point out a quick thing for those of you in the audience. The sections A, B and C on the left correspond to those crosshatches here on the right side of the plan. So that represents kind of where you are along the frontage of the Maple Avenue.
Yes, thank you. The second thing we wanted to talk about is that we have a, there was some feedback from the public at the last meeting regarding the proximity of the parking to the residence at Sixteenth, Sixteenth Chase Terrace and we had some conversations about how we could make this a more gracious relationship while, you know, obviously retaining the parking that we're needing to provide. And so what we've done is we're proposing to change the geometry of this corner here which allows us to have more room for grading, more room for existing trees, potentially more room for snow storage while retaining the number of parking spaces that we had before. This eliminates the need for a retaining wall all the way up to the back of Chase Terrace and allows us to retain the existing mature trees that are on-site.
Before we move on.
Yeah.
Is that possible?
Yes.
What is that?
So if you can see, there's a pinch point at the corner right there where the property line comes in. Can, can I show my arrow right here? So this right here, there's a pinch point here where we have a couple of foot, feet of grade change. So this little bump out here, we've eliminated a space which allows us to create, to put it a small retaining wall, a section of retaining wall here which allows the grading for that to work. But this change in geometry, which actually, you know, needs to be reflected further in the plan once we really revise the drawings, actually adds another space so we can end up with a net same number of spaces.
Excuse me, that won't benefit that neighbor.
Correct. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And this is, as I had mentioned earlier, we had the opportunity to provide this as a proposed concept to that abutter, but we haven't advanced that discussion further. So I think we would just look for your comment as well as continuing that discussion to figure out how those two interact to create a, a better revision that we can include next time we submit a plan set to you. So next, I'll move on to the economic and fiscal impacts. Again, this was at request of town staff. They gave an agenda essentially for what we should cover in this meeting specifically and so we were to review the Graves Engineering as well as economic and fiscal impacts. So what I'll do here is a basic overview of the kind of general impacts to, of this project on the town center. You may have seen this, this slide has been shared in a public forum before in a, in a public outreach meeting we had at the Public Library. But generally, I want to cover three, three sections here, one of which is headed as place-making supports business and this is really key just in general as it relates to the mix of uses that we're proposing on-site and how this mix of uses complements the other mix of uses in the town center. So we're proposing obviously seventy-seven hundred square feet of retail and again, as I had mentioned earlier, that mix of uses, the programming of it will obviously be, will acknowledge how people may use those spaces and how the residents may actually, you know, obviously enjoy to have the ability to have a meal in the evening, a coffee in the morning and, you know, specialty sandwiches in the middle of the day as opposed to, you know, programming everything all at once. And so between the, the programming of that space, but also the kind of critical mass of activity that will result when all those spaces are together, you know, that contributes to sort of a clustering effect where people come for the destination and they're able to park once and walk and also generally able to sort of knit those many uses together in their experience that, of visiting the town center. So by, by ensuring that there's a, a mix of uses in that space, we're not only appealing to the residents of the building, but also improving the overall relationship to other town center businesses because we're creating a greater diversity and greater options within walking distance for interested patrons. Relative to the housing component, you know, bringing more residents within walking distance to the town center will create viability for the new businesses, but also increase demand for other town center goods and services. And, you know, considering obviously that there, some of these businesses have a, there's a variety of public parking options for businesses, some of which may have more and some may have less. By creating the synergy of the shared parking where there will be a combination of, of dedicated public parking as well as parking for businesses at Beale Commons where those in, patrons may then choose to go patronize other businesses by foot, that increases the overall viability of the entire town center district by creating this kind of mix of synergistic retail, food, housing and parking on one centrally located parcel. So now what I will do is review generally what that translates to in terms of economic and fiscal impacts. This is, I, I want to preface this with a couple of items. So there's two slides that I'll share. The first is what we're calling general and one-time impacts. These are sort of related to the inception of the project, creating it. So these are water and sewer fees, building permit fees, the impacts of employment for the construction period and then the overall investment that we will be making in this, in this site. And the second slide is ongoing. But I should caveat this that there's, for both of these slides, obviously these estimates, we try to be very conservative and not overstate. And so over the course of this process, there's been a number of estimates and those estimates change by necessity as the project cost changes and the scope of the project changes. So there may be minor variations between what various, you know, boards or commissions may have seen previously, but as we continue to evolve this process, we obviously keep our numbers updated to the extent that we can. So again, we're looking at an overall investment here of twenty-three million dollars which represents the total development cost of the project. That's inclusive of the construction and site work and all the soft costs associated. We're looking at an estimate of thirty to forty permanent jobs associated with the retail mix that we have proposed here. And again, these are conservative estimates and those will change over time. From a construction, construction job impact perspective, we are working with a pre-construction manager and who's familiar with the project and has continually priced the project as we've developed the plans and they have provided us with construction job impacts representing between about three hundred sixty and four hundred twenty total personnel that will support this project during the construction period, of which there will be about thirty to thirty-five new permanent hires associated with a project of this size and those will be people that they project will be retained in the company over time, but as a result catalyzed by this project with five to seven new permanent support jobs in the office. The building permit fees, which are again calculated based on our, a number of, that, we create this math based on the guidelines of the town, but also based on our current cost estimates. We're looking at approximately two hundred thousand dollars of building permit fees. And that final category, which is water and sewer infiltration inflow, there's a number of categories there of which will be summarized on the last page, but we're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars of inflow and infiltration in addition to approximately four hundred fifty thousand of sewer and water connection fees and then an additional almost thirteen thousand in water conservation fees. Again, so this represents what we're determining as the kind of general and one-time impacts of the project distilled to those things that we feel we can reasonably calculate based on past experience or existing schedule fees by the town of Shrewsbury. The second slide, text is small, so just for this slide, I will increase the size for you. Sorry about that. So these are what we are considering kind of ongoing revenue estimates and what we've done here, and this is a particularly important point to caveat, is that we are not responsible for the ultimate assessment of the property and so we can't, we can't project exactly what the assessor will determine the ultimate value of this is from an assessment perspective. So what we do in order to not make too many uninformed estimates is we look at comparables in the marketplace and base, based on a kind of per-square footage or per-unit basis so that we can make a conservative estimate based on other things in the town of Shrewsbury. And so the structure of this table that I've shared with you has basically, for each of the fiscal impacts, what I'm showing is the kind of high and low estimates. Quinn thirty-five being the high assessment estimate versus the commons at Haynes Farm as the lower estimate. And so that gives us in our top category, from a tax revenue perspective, if we're using those two examples as the high and low, a range of between one hundred fifty-six and one hundred ninety-five thousand in an annual tax revenue to the town. And again, this is ultimately going to be based on the assessment, which the assessment is done by the town of Shrewsbury and is informed by many factors that we don't control. The second category here, which we're referring to as the, this is for the commercial. So if you look at the top, we're looking at just residential and in the second category, commercial, that one ninety-three Boston Turnpike is actually the commercial component of Quinn thirty-five, so that entire, that entire district there. And so again, broken out by square footage, we're looking at an additional high of twenty-one thousand and low of ten thousand in ongoing commercial tax revenue because that's calculated slightly differently. If you move down to that third category, we're looking at estimating excise tax revenue and this is at a one-point-two-five cars per unit ratio, which again, there's, you know, this number is just kind of a placeholder based on general unit type. So we're expecting approximately sixty-nine cars at a conservative estimate of fifteen thousand per car and that results in a twenty-five thousand dollar annual payment based on the vehicle ownership that would be potentially associated with this development. The fourth category is estimating meal tax revenue and I'll just call your attention to one thing, which is you'll see that the fifty-five hundred square feet is obviously less than the seventy-seven square, hundred square feet that we're proposing for the entire commercial section. So this is again, a commercial, a conservative estimate assuming that only fifty-five hundred square feet is actually allocated to places where you'd be purchasing food versus maybe the specialty market where you're purchasing improved goods. And using a placeholder number of two hundred fifty dollars per square foot, we're looking at an additional ten thousand dollars approximately of ongoing annual meal tax revenue. So when those items are added up using the methodology that I described, we're between a hundred ninety-two and two hundred forty-two thousand dollars in annual tax revenue to the town from the categories that I described. And what I will share next is, this is just based on the other impact studies, in particular, we pulled from the methodology of Edgemere and this assumes, there are two data points that, that feed this information here. The first is the two thousand twenty-two budgets for fire and police and the two thousand twenty-one annual reports for both of those. So basically, we're assigning, using the same methodology that Edgemere had assigned for this same analysis, we're essentially assigning a cost per call based on twenty-twenty-one actuals, but based on the twenty-twenty-two budgeted costs. And then that also is further refined by an actual modifier for the number of calls that result, or the number of incidents that resulted in, in actual dispatches. So we have calculated approximately the fiscal impacts to be, you know, for, between commercial and residential, about eight thousand dollars for police and about six thousand dollars for fire. The final category here about ongoing costs in the bottommost chart is the fiscal impacts of school-aged children relative to bedroom size. And again, the methodology is, is based on the annual budget and kind of on a per-pupil basis and therefore infers a total annual cost to the school department to service additional pupils in the school. And so realistically, what we think we're looking at here is approximately zero school-aged children for one-bedroom units and approximately five school-aged children for the two-bedroom units on an annual basis representing about fifty thousand dollars in recurring annual cost to the town of Shrewsbury's school department. In summary, I know I reviewed these verbally, but the net result of this, if we look at the estimated gross revenue to the town on an ongoing basis, we're looking at two hundred fifty-two thousand dollars and if you subtract the items I shared in the final slide relative to police impact, fire impacts and school with the addition of a scaled other departments, again, this was scaled based on the assumptions in Edgemere, scaled down relative to the number of square feet in this project versus Edgemere. It results in a net positive fiscal impact of about one hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars and about one hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars on an annual basis. So with that, I'll hand it back to the board and just as a reminder, we have engineering, traffic and architecture here for questions. So with that, um I'll hand it back to the board and just as a reminder, we have engineering, traffic uh and architecture here for questions.
Um, I also do have a uh parking presentation that I'd like to share.
Do I hand this to you?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board and those in attendance. Um, I was asked to um develop a presentation um as well as a supporting uh memo that was uh emailed to you uh later this afternoon. Um, I don't expect the board to have uh similarly had a chance to review that. Um, but that was uh submitted uh to the planning board as well as the select board for their uh review. Um, I have this supplemental presentation um that will go over um kind of the thirty thousand uh foot view of what that memo includes. Um, one of the uh concerns that has been brought up is not just the parking on-site, but the parking um in the context of the uh larger town center environment. So um one of the key points um to remember um is that this project is one piece of um what has been a large uh planning effort over a number of years for the vision of the town center um and what um uh the community wants to see with the the center itself, uh especially i- in regards to parking. Uh, there's a number of uh studies and planning efforts that have been conducted, including the Shrewsbury Master Plan, the Town Center Parking Management Plan, uh the Town Center Study, uh and the pedestrian safety and walkability in the town, in the Shrewsbury Town Center Report. Um, primarily, uh I think the meat and potatoes of those reports in terms of the parking esp- specifically in relation to this site, um is the Shrewsbury Town Center Parking Management Plan, which was produced um uh prompted uh by the Shrewsbury Master Plan and the findings um of that planning process. Um, that parking management plan was then um enhanced or uh furthered uh with the Shrewsbury Town Center Study um that looked at um parking and the findings of that parking management plan uh in more detail. Um, so this is taken from uh that parking uh management plan uh study, um looking at the existing conditions uh in the town center. Uh, it included a parking inventory, uh an analysis of that. Um, so in the town center uh study area where they conducted that study, uh they found that there was uh two thousand and forty-one existing parking spaces. I know it says two thousand and thirty-one there. Um, that's because ten spaces were uh on-street spaces were removed in twenty-twenty-one as part of mass DOT improvements. Um, fifty of those uh spaces uh are on s- on-street parking spaces. Um, and one thousand four hundred and seventy-one of those spaces are identified in what's called uh the Town Center Core. Uh, the Shrewsbury Public Library provides a hundred and two parking spaces designated as public when the library is not open. And the majority of the spaces uh in the town center are unregulated. Looking at this proposal, there are uh twenty public parking spaces dedicated on-site. Uh, ten additional public spaces uh will be included along Haskell Street. There's a hundred and sixteen spaces for specific use by the development. Uh, and this represents a net increase of fifty-three parking spaces from the existing conditions, thirty of which will be designated as uh dedicated public parking. The Town Center Parking Standards are design- are defined in the Shrewsbury Zoning Bylaw, and they require developers to provide the parking plan, which we have seen, um rather than a specific calculation per singular use. Um, it's important to note that the town does not see its roles holding a single development responsible for addressing all of the public parking needs in the town center. Instead, the proposed public parking should be designed to mitigate the potential impacts of the specific site, which we find that this project does. Um, this is a snapshot of the uh Town Center Core, which just shows how that scales back from the uh original parking inventory. Um, part of the analysis of the parking inventory looked at weekday and weekend uh peak rates of parking utilization. Uh, and what they found in both cases uh was that there was generally uh less than forty percent utilization during peak hours uh of all of the parking spaces in the town center. Um, this shows that there is a significant underutilization of the existing parking uh in the town center. Uh, and this is uh showing the same for the uh weekend peak rates. Part of the key findings of that report, um that and specifically in relation to uh this site, where I'm not, I'm not going to go over all of them, um but the overall parking demand levels are lower than what the existing parking facilities can accommodate, leaving some parking significantly underutilized. And that many of the parking facilities were never utilized more than fifty percent, including several larger surface parking lots near the downtown core. They also reviewed the zoning and land use um and found that uh the parking requirements at the time were high for a walkable downtown area and that those requirements were potentially limiting development. Uh, they also noted that the code did not match demand in the study area, as that analysis showed, and did not allow potential developers uh flexibility to adjust the parking to fit the downtown context. So after that, um the Shrewsbury Town Center Study expanded on that parking management uh plan findings, especially with the shared uh with shared parking requirements and pedestrian infrastructure. That study uh provided formalized shared parking agreement examples um and included a number of uh uh priority items that uh should be considered in policy frameworks. Uh, those specific to this site and parking uh were that the site should include parking spaces that can be used as a shared resource for businesses in the town center and that the number of parking spaces reserved for the building shall be minimized. Um, we see that this proposal includes a set aside of at least twenty public parking spaces in proximity to the retained parcel at one to seven Maple Ave, in addition to the ten uh parking spaces allocated along Haskell Street, um which are part of the land dispo- land disposition agreement. The other item was that the building should engage, engage the street and maintain access to the Veterans Memorial, uh preferably preserved in its current location and condition. The space between the facade of the building and the street uh designed for pedestrians and bicyclists. Um, parking in the interior travel lanes for automobiles not to be placed uh between the primary building facade and the street. This current uh proposal certainly uh has the uh Veterans Memorial retained in situ uh as well as the parking located at the rear of the structure uh in accordance with that recommendation. Um, additional um municipal efforts, um I think it's important to note that the overall approach of the town center needs to be efficient uh and does not reduce the redevelopable space in the town center by using traditional uses uh of parking uh that require large amounts of surface parking. Uh, it's also important that not a single, not one single project i- is required to provide the parking needs of the entire town center. Uh, the town has been uh undertaking a number of municipal efforts uh related to those studies, uh addressing the parking challenges in the town center incrementally, uh which include the town center parking standards being revised uh uh to a club, to require the parking plan. Additionally, the select board required the land disposition agreement uh for the parking, public parking set aside of twenty se- twenty spaces at one to seven Maple Ave. The town has been working to improve wayfinding signage um to allow uh the uh realization of the underutilized parking spaces in the town center, uh and encouraging shared parking agreements between private property owners. Uh, just circling back to the key points, um the project at one to seven Maple Ave currently has ninety-three parking spaces existing. This proposed par- project consists of one hundred and forty-six total parking spaces, twenty of which are on-site. Uh, ten of them are on-street, uh one hundred and sixteen will be allocated for the retail and residential use on the site. And this uh represents a net increase of fifty-three parking spaces from existing conditions, thirty of which will be designated as dedicated public parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll open up questions to the board. Uh, Mr. Rowe, any questions at this time?
Uh, on the parking, um you mentioned that there would be twenty dedicated parking spaces and then ten on Haskell Street. Uh, the twenty dedicated ones, how are you going to kind of practically um manage those that it is for public parking purposes, you know?
Great question. So uh we had a conversation in advance of this to discuss this with our proposed property manager who manages similar projects and uh that, the parking management plan will require some continued evolution as well as probably some discussion with the town, relative specifically to those twenty parking spaces. But as it relates to that which I can answer now, which is the intent for our residential and commercial would be to uh sticker the residential units, uh the residential vehicles, not the units, so that the uh it if a resident is abusing, so to speak, a public parking space is visible by way of sticker. Um, and how that coincides with the management, perhaps the timed signage of the public spaces is unknown. But the idea at this point is that uh management staff would be able to be aware because of the visual decal. Um, so that if those spaces, since they would be physically uh separated as the twenty spaces for the public, it's obvious to see if someone is not using what should be residentially allocated space.
Um, just my second question is on the, on the, uh, I believe you said there are five, it's going to add five school-aged uh children. Um, wh- where, where, where do you get those numbers? What's the source like? I mean, it, it appears to me that there should be a lot more than five, but again.
So there's uh, there's quite a bit of data on school-aged children uh as it coincides with multifamily housing production in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. In particular, there is a uh very useful study from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council that uh tracked over a fifteen-year period uh school age enrollment in public schools and coincided that with multifamily housing production in certain clusters of communities uh separated by urban and suburban context. And so I, there's obviously a range, right? Ev- all data has a range. And uh but to the best of our calculation, recognizing the suburban context of Shrewsbury as compared to uh urban areas, which actually saw the relatively highest increase in uh school enrollment. Suburban areas saw a overall trend that matches demographic trends of uh reduced school enrollment over the fifteen-year period. And that was generally decoupled from multifamily housing production. So uh, you know, I would, if, if it's important, we could, we could look kind of like we did with the fiscal impacts at the kind of range analysis. Um, but the general expectation is that considering the bedroom count and the fact that the largest units we have are two bedrooms, uh and acknowledging that the one bedrooms are likely not to have children and if they were, they would uh probably have younger children that would be preschool age. Um, our, and our analysis is kind of based on that M A P C study uh resulted in that kind of safe, conservative assumption of five.
My, my last question is uh, it, it really quick one. Uh, you had in one of the slides, water conservation fee as some in the fiscal impact one, wh- what is that? Is that something that the town charges or uh?
That was my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Jerry?
Um, just a couple of quick questions. With respect to the change of the parking to accommodate the abutter at sixteen Chase Terrace, it wasn't clear to me from how you made that change that that would impact the concerns that were raised at the last meeting, because the change you made is off towards the corner of the property. So it's not clear to me, but I suppose, you know, if you've raised that with the abutter, we'll wait and see what they come back with.
The difference is is that it removes the need for a long retaining wall between the edge of the parking and the abutter. By making a larger area, we can grade without a retaining wall, which allows us to keep the existing trees. Previous, in our previous iteration, we had a retaining wall going right through the middle of a couple of existing trees. And so if we have a larger distance, we can remove that. It was just a, it was like a two-foot retaining wall. Um, but if we have more, more room, we don't need that retaining wall, which allows us to keep the trees.
And when you talked about replacing the section of fence and providing screening with that fence, that would be in that area as well? Because I know one of the concerns was the headlights of the cars parking in that area.
Yes, and that was one of the comments from Graves, was about um chain link fencing in, in general. And it is our interpretation that we need to provide solid fencing and not chain link fencing, either solid fencing or screening. So in one way or the other, we'll provide screening um between the abutter and the parking.
Okay. Um, with respect to the parking, um it seemed to me that the analysis you provided, particularly this Saturday midday, if I'm remembering correctly, um seemed to be leaving virtually no margin for error. And I'm assuming that the numbers that you use in that analysis are median numbers, a fiftieth percentile. And so uh I would be curious to know what that might look like in a worst-case scenario. Um, because it doesn't seem like, and it, and that may have been covered in something we received today, because I know there was stuff that came out late. But um I'd just be curious what that would look like, because from Mr. McGoldrick's report as well, there's currently a forty parking space lot there that's got utilization, I think it was thirty to sixty percent. So if there's any use of that field, that's twenty-four cars, um the public parking is gone, right? So I, I don't, it doesn't feel to me like there's a lot of uh margin for error there, and I just think that's something that should probably be addressed.
Could, so Maureen is here with uh the traffic engineer who uh completed that assessment. And Maureen, could you speak to the methodology and and to the point specifically?
Thank you. My name's Maureen McHugh. Um, so for the Urban Land Institute um for shared parking, there's a couple of different steps that you go through. They identify a base parking rate. And we had looked at the weekday morning and afternoon peak hours to coincide not only with our trip generation uh general timeframe, but also for timeframes that made sense for those potential uses that would be on-site. And then again, Saturday midday, uh we looked at a noon time timeframe to coincide with a typical peak um for tri- uh trip generation for a Saturday. Um, ULI then gives time of year, so month uh of the year adjustments that you can take and then time of day adjustments based on those peaks that you're looking at. So we looked at the entire year for the weekday morning, the weekday afternoon and Saturday, and that is an average um adjustment of the base parking number based on um those time of day adjustments. So it, it does come out to a hundred and twenty-seven spaces. However, um Urban Land Institute also, for the café specifically, they don't have a similar, uh an exact land use for café. They have a very similar land use. In our opinion, it's conservative. Um, if you do look at the zoning uh regulations compared to the base uh ULI parking rates, we're already about thirty to forty spaces over uh the zoning requirement with the ULI rate before taking the adjustments. So we feel that the ULI um is conservative in and of itself.
Well, I can't, but. And just to be clear, when you took the uses into account for the site, was the use of the ball field included in that analysis?
We're comparing it, as Taylor mentioned, we were looking specifically compared to the hundred and twenty-six spaces, so excluding the twenty spaces for public use. Um, so the twenty spaces for public use could be used for the adjacent ball field as well as uh spaces along Haskell. So there's thirty spaces um that would be available for potential public use.
Tim, could I ask a question while you're here? Um, is the land, is the, is it still going to be used as a ball field or is it just going to be open space? Because that's a big difference.
I can answer that from the town. So Kristen Lass, Assistant Town Manager, um just wanted to make two clarifications um while I'm speaking. So um the, the land disposition agreement states that Civico will be returning the point seven acres of land to the town of Shrewsbury loomed and ceded. Um, it is the goal of the town of Shrewsbury and the Select Board uh to actually have a very public process to understand what the town would like to see on that parcel and property. Um, we have CPA funding now, we have some additional funding. Um, so we will be uh reviewing that in, in great detail with the public to see what those needs are. Um, you know, soon after this project is permitted while it's under construction, so we can be ready to go uh right after that uh loomed and ceded is needed. So that's where we're, we're going on that. Um, also just wanted to make uh two other quick comments. Um, I think in Chris's presentation, he noted a hundred and nineteen uh spaces uh that would be for the project. I think we were counting the ten I think we were counting the ten spaces on Haskell as part of that hundred and forty-six. That's actually excluded, I believe. So, there's actually additional spaces that we will adjust our presentation for. And the other item is, the Select Board is actually in negotiations with two separate property owners in the town center for actually additional parking for public. So, as Chris stated in his presentation, it's just not all one property that would be responsible for that. But we actually, through the Select Board, are in those negotiations right now to have even more additional public parking allocated that will hopefully become public by April of this year.
Any other questions, Mr. Jerry?
I'll pause for now.
Mr. O'Toole-Lakers?
Now, just so I'm clear on this. We got a McMahon response today that was intended to be responsive to the M D M December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two comment, correct?
I think that's accurate.
This presentation, this memo is responsive to the Graves comment. We do have additional M D M peer review comments that were.
But he, but Mr. Michaud also talked about shared parking.
So, this addresses that comment.
So, that, that addresses that. So, but the applicant's presentation today incorporated some of the, some of your anal, the McMahon analysis relative to shared parking. So, I, I guess we're, to simplify it, to streamline it, Mr. Michaud hasn't had a crack at what you've presented yet today, correct?
No.
So, he hasn't had an opportunity to review that. So, I guess I would reserve comment until, on the parking issue, until Mr. Michaud has had an opportunity to review what you submitted, as well as what Chris just went over, just to make sure that he's okay with it. Hopefully, he'll have that by our next meeting.
Mr. Thomas?
I was reading in some of the notes over there about a bus stop. I don't see any of that anywhere on the plan, or I don't see, there was talk of it should be enclosed cover or.
So, we had preliminary conversations with town staff about, not viability, but appropriateness of location. And so, where that stands right now is we're waiting for feedback from planning staff. And that was in, included in the conversation we had, where we also talked about connectivity between the retained parcel and the parking lot.
I would think having a bus stop would, I mean, not everyone uses a bus, but it would help with the parking issues.
It would.
Possibly. Couldn't hurt?
No, and, and in addition, something I should mention is that the, the parking analysis doesn't account for potential visitors to the site using other modes of transportation. So, for example, bus.
Okay. Also, the E V charging stations, where are we at with that?
Eric, what do we have in our plan?
Yeah, so currently, we're proposing two, two stations central on the, on the parking area for E V stations.
Okay. And then, my only other comment now would be, I guess we don't know about the ball field. Because I never, I never, having given that a lot of thought, I assumed it was going to be just open space and not the possibility of a ball field. My kids play ball there, and I know how it was on weekends, and there was a lot of cars. So, I don't know where we stand with that. I guess it's not really your problem. It's the town's problem. But I guess we'll have to see going forward where that goes. But that was really my only other concern, as of now.
Spent a lot of time on the, the parking questions here. I'm going to change gears just a little bit. So, the landscaping in, in the front, where the sidewalk changes were done. Cut, sorry, the sectional views are very helpful. I'm glad that we can now understand a little bit more about, that patio is actually elevated, so it's not necessarily going to be utilized by passing pedestrians, which is encouraging. The landscaping itself of the trees, could we just make sure that we put in some mature trees? We've done a lot of landscaping with a lot of projects around here, and it tends to take a bit of time for those trees to get kind of flourish to the point where you get that canopy effect that you're looking for. So.
It's a challenge, because trees actually, when you transplant them, they want to be relatively young in order for their roots to spread and to establish themselves, so they don't, you know, end up, you know, having root balls that just sort of flop over when it's windy. So, we'll definitely take a look and get trees that we can fit in the spaces that they're going that are appropriate. But that is, is always a challenge to, to get trees that are appropriately sized for those streets.
And I'm going to hold off additional comments relative to the parking and things, because we haven't had an opportunity to review. And plus, we know we have more peer review that's going to happen on that. Any other questions or comments from the planning department?
I just wanted to acknowledge that Jeff Walsh from Graves Engineering are peer review engineers in attendance tonight as well.
Excuse me. All right. So, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Yes, ma'am. Please, if you could, stand and go up to the mic and give your name and address.
My name is Gail Pews. I live on Westwood Road. I haven't heard anything about handicap parking, and that's limited in the center of town. So, what's the story? Where is the handicap parking? Have you considered with all the new parking places, and is it going to be convenient for handicap people? It's very important.
Mr. McGoldrick?
Yes, so I believe handicap parking is going to be part of our requirement for the Architectural Access Board and handle the building permit fees.
So, there's more to come on that. An additional meeting specifically around that will be.
An additional meeting about handicap parking? Is that what I'm hearing?
That topic will be brought up at the, is that the September nineteenth, I mean, the January nineteenth meeting, or is that the?
Yeah, we, yeah, we can have that further discussion on January nineteenth on the handicap parking.
Yeah, just as, for those that weren't here at last month's meeting, we're, we're trying to collect certain items of the site plan and box them and talk about them specifically, so we don't have a four-hour meeting and we're going around in circles. So, things like the handicap parking, that will be part of the, our next meeting for this particular project will be in two weeks. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else in the audience wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
Can you put that parking one up? Because this is a parking meeting.
Yep. Could you please identify yourself?
We're not done with parking.
My name is Ron Pews, and I live on Westwood Road in the center. So, if we could have the chat with the parking on it, because numbers seem to be jumping all over the place. I mean, I remember when they had the eighty-three parking for residential, which was sort of an agreed piece, because nothing was required, but I believe it's required, one and a half parking spaces per unit, which is eighty-three. I'm now hearing that it's sixty-nine that they're going to have, that they're proposing. I don't know where that number came from, or how do you get one and a quarter cars per unit? I don't know how many people in here are one and a quarter car family. I would think most of them are two-car families. And I understand that they're, these are, you know, newlyweds or whatever coming in. I also want to say something on, on Mr. Rowe's thing with the five kids. It takes nine months to make a baby. It takes six years to make a student. And I don't think anybody takes that into consideration in there, because there's probably no kids when they move in. I mean, if you check the numbers at, I'll say Spags, whatever that one is. You know, I'm hearing that there's seventeen or something children there. Well, people come in, they get married, they have, they rent an apartment. Children come, not a student yet. Five years later, still not a student. All of a sudden, now they become students, and we're stuck with them for twelve years. And, and I look at the residential parking on weekday A Ms and weekday P Ms, and there's forty-nine people in the restaurant, and only forty-two people came home from work that night of the fifty-five units. Doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, especially with the eighty-three that was supposed to be there.
Can I interrupt you for a moment? I'll ask the proponent, the applicant, if they can explain a little bit more in detail where those values come from.
So, I'll pass the, taking the second set of the questions first, I think if Maureen can speak to the, to the methodology about weekday A M and P M, I think that might be helpful.
This table was meant more of as a comparison, so we have the base zoning requirements on the left side. And then, the weekday A M, weekday P M, and Saturday midday are the shared parking values that ULI provides. So, ULI recognizes that depending on certain times of the day, a full parking space requirement for each individual use may not be required. For example, in a midday timeframe, you may not need all of the residential.
You don't have midday up here?
We do for Saturday. That's the typical timeframe.
But, I mean, the morning?
Yes.
People go to work, I understand.
Yep.
So, if you come at ten o'clock, you'll probably only be thirty-nine cars in the parking lot. But three more at P M, which judging by the restaurant, is like six, six o'clock or seven o'clock. I don't know how you would get to party two in a, in a, out of eighty-three cars.
Are you, you, you don't add those up, that there's separate timeframes, are you?
No, there's forty-two weekday P M.
Yep.
I'm taking that as six o'clock, and the restaurant sort of says that, yeah, it's probably around six o'clock, because there's forty-nine cars at the restaurant.
Again, that, it's based on the ULI, it's based on the time of year adjustments and the time of day adjustments that we took in accordance with ULI, and it's an average for the entire year. And those are the numbers that.
Excuse me, I'm going to have to try to help out a little. A lot of these formulas and values are driven from past experiences, not necessarily taking one number and adding it to another. It's, these are, these are averages.
Aggregated.
Based on experience, based on a lot of different things.
The location of these places, that they're taking the averages from. Because we're in a place where we've got one Westwood group, if you want to go to Westwood. Otherwise, you need a cat.
Understood. So.
So, ULI, so it's, it's aggregated from various sites all over the country, similar to how we use the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. They do studies on various sites around the country to provide numbers for planning purposes.
All right, sir, sir, I'm going to have to interrupt you. Just, this isn't going to be a conversation on that long, okay? So, if you could please maybe have a seat, and maybe you can take some time offline and, and work with consultant. I think you can get more of those clarity answers.
Mr. Michaud to interview this.
Right. Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience wish to be heard? Yes, please.
Tony Bonaventura, one twenty, how am I have? I, I actually thought tonight's meeting was going to be just about the fiscal impact and social. We went, got into a lot of other stuff there, so I'm not really prepared to speak on that. But the fiscal impact numbers were quite interesting, how they derive those. It's really not quite that complicated. We have a budget in town. We know what that budget is. Forty-five percent of that roughly goes to everything except for schools. And about fifty-five percent roughly of the budget goes to schools. So, we don't kind of parcel the individual items. It all goes into the wash. You know, police, fire, all of those things go into that forty-five percent, all of the services, town hall, everything. We don't get to make our own numbers for that, which leaves fifty-five percent of the estimates for the schools. So, we've seen numbers, the selectmen back in March put a number on this project of anticipate a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in tax revenue. The most generous one, I think, tonight was, and in the application, was two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars by the developer annually. So, if you take out fifty-five percent of that, which would be your allocation that you could utilize for school-aged children, I think in town, that's roughly like thirteen-five per student or fourteen thousand. At thirteen-five, that leaves you nine point six students. So, it's really not that complicated. We don't know how many students are going to be there. In their application, they actually did an estimate where they estimated thirteen based on two formulas, formulas, and they came up with thirteen. So, at thirteen, this is a negative cash flow situation for the town of Shrewsbury. We actually lose money on this project. That's not accounting for the asset loss for the town. If this project goes through, we have a property there that the town has owned for at least a hundred years. The value of that is somewhere between two, four, or five million dollars. I think it's right now assessed at four million dollars. Generally, real estate appreciates at a rate of three to five percent per year. In our area, it's probably much more five or even higher than that. So, if you take at the lowest valuation around two million, we lose a hundred thousand dollars in asset appreciation. If you take that at four million, we lose two hundred thousand dollars in asset appreciation. So, on a pretty conservative school children model, we lose money upfront, and we lose that asset appreciation. So, I don't see how by any fiscal analysis, this project brings in any additional tax relief for the residents of Shrewsbury. And what we're investing into this, it shouldn't even be close. This should be three, four, five hundred thousand dollars coming into the town on the positive side. I think that, you know, tonight, there's a few other applicants here. And every one of those projects will have that type of effect. It will be positive to the town. This is a ninety percent residential project. The commercial end of it, by the way, it's seven thousand square feet of commercial, which is nothing in our town. We probably have well over a million square feet of commercial property, not industrial, just retail, office, probably even more than that for what applies under the zoning. So, fiscally, this is a loser. I'd like to hear, you know, somebody can dispute that, you can't anticipate the exact number of students. This is not a high number that we're talking about. It's, it's marginal. There are a lot of things that I would like to speak about. I have other items on this, you know, they have to do other items on this project. But I really didn't think that that, I thought, as you said, the parking was going to be another time, so I kind of respected that. So, I hope that you'll, you know, take that into account going forward, that you'll allow us to speak back, because it's a little unfair that the proponent basically spoke about everything in this project tonight. And, and, you know, we're, we're trying to keep it short and be respectful.
I, I, I understand your point there. We didn't really talk about everything with the project, believe it or not. It's actually very narrow scope is what we're looking at.
Well, we are pretty deep into parking and land deep.
We can agree to disagree that the fiscal report information, given the way you're understanding it and the way that you, you're running it through your calculus, we don't necessarily, I don't necessarily agree with that, but that's just my opinion. You have your opinion on that. I will ask Ms. Lass, if, I know that we've done studies with some previous projects of this nature, such as the Spags redevelopment. I don't know what the number of students there is currently, and we, I don't remember what it was proposed at, or how close are we at with those numbers?
Yeah, sure, I can help you answer that. So, for Lake Way Commons, again, that's two hundred and fifty units of one, two, and three bedrooms. So, this project does not have three bedrooms, and we were calculating between twenty-five and thirty students for that. There are currently twenty-five students based upon the calculations from the school department in October. And the town of Shrewsbury presents to the Select Board every November the actual number of schoolchildren in various depart, in various developments. So, we actually have a very firm number that we use and has not fluctuated very often. And Civico has used that number in their calculations that were presented this evening.
So, the formulation is close. I'm just one second.
So, the question, so the number that the town projects is the number that was given here, or?
No, that's the number that is actual for schoolchildren. We actually, every single year, get the number of schoolchildren per residential housing project and have a calculation of certain number of schoolchildren per unit. And we have presented that to Civico to use in our calculation, which they did this evening.
Okay, so I didn't see that percentage and all of that breakdown in anything, you know, specifically to the existing.
No, and I, and again, it was, the number they came up with was five, that was based on the information that was driven by the town, based on our, our experience as a community.
So, even at that number, it's very, there's almost nothing there. So, even giving the benefit of the doubt, what the gentleman said earlier, made the comments about maturing these complexes, Quinn, all of these complexes that have only been there two, three, four years, it's a very good point.
We actually, I'll interrupt you. We've actually held this data for. We actually, I'll interrupt you, we've actually held this data for Haynes Farm, which has been along for twenty, you know, forty years, Madison Place, which has been around for twelve years, so we actually have this data much further back than that. So I won't say much further than that, but we, we collect a lot of data, and it's true data, and, and we see that throughout our region as well.
So, so you left out a few names that have been around a long time, like Sheridan, and, I don't know, behind the bowling alley?
Yeah, I'm not gonna get into that all this evening.
Okay. Well, we, of course, we always have a little worry about cherry picking certain things. I will speak briefly about the parking, because they did bring it up, I have a lot more to say, but it was very interesting, again, with the cherry picking of numbers, that conveniently, we have no idea what's gonna go into this, this could be vacant for five years, there's no tenant signed. Very, it's very unusual for a commercial developer, if they were developing just commercially, not have an anchor tenant, there's no tenant here, so we don't know what it's gonna be. But in the ideal scenario of a cafe, the busiest time for a cafe is Saturday and Sunday morning. Conveniently, that was left off. And so you have Saturday and Sunday morning, where most people tend to like to sleep in, so their residential will be very high, and it will also be the highest time for that type of a business. So if that is true, that's a, the key number, and, and any cafe that's gonna succeed is going to have twenty, thirty, or more parking spots used, depending on the size. So, it was, that, you know, kind of, as a resident, it's a little disconcerting that numbers like that are left out of those equations.
Thank you, sir.
That's it for tonight, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience who should be heard? Yes, sir.
So I'm trying to tie out some numbers here, right? And the twenty-three million in investment ties out, right? Even the proposed revenue that's gonna come in, but there's one number that I didn't see, and this is from Samia Selectman, right, and I have it in print right here. When he was saying, why, why are we selling this, why are we giving this land away, he said that there's sixteen million dollars in remediation that needs to be done. Now, I don't know if Beal is actually a nuclear power plant, but I didn't see any numbers.
I'm gonna interrupt you for a moment. At the outset, when I opened this hearing last month, what I wanted to convey to the public is, how we got here is not this board's concern. I, I have no control over that. This, the wholesale of the property and all that has nothing to do with this board, this board deals with the site. So how we got there-
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but by moving forward, we're complicit in how we got here. It's, it's, if you move it forward, then basically you're agreeing with it, right? So, all I'm doing is, I'm asking how, where's the sixteen million dollars in remediation, that's right here in print.
The applicant has this property under agreement, so the applicant is entitled to bring forth this application. So, what, I, what, I agree with Mr. Boulet, we're not gonna relitigate the issue of whether this is a good deal or not, because we all, everybody on this board may have a different opinion, but I don't think that it's, I think it's undisputed that the applicant has a right to be here. So I think what you are talking about in terms of the asbestos remediation and the demolition, it's kinda a horizontal attack on that, and I don't think it really, whether it's, whether it's a dollar or sixteen million dollars, that's the applicant's problem when they close on the property in terms of the remediation. I, I don't think it's relevant to the economic analysis that they provided tonight.
All right, I'm glad to hear that that's your position.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the, else in the audience? Yes, sir.
Jim McWilliams, Precinct One, Colton Lane. There are some other people from the same area where I'm from, and I'd just like to revisit for a minute as far as the parking in the center of town, nothing to do with the development. But you talked about having all this surplus parking that we have, and that we have forty percent of the parking that isn't utilized a long time, but I come through the center of town every day, I never see any parking places that are available, and I don't know where these other, where's all this other parking coming from that you're talking about? Because I know, excuse me, the old cold building, there's no parking there, so it really affects the tenants there. So, where is all this parking? I don't know if it's on side streets, I know Main Street, we don't have very much parking at all. So, can you just tell us where, where those numbers come from, and where that parking comes from?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I can just steal back the presentation briefly. So I apologize, that graphic's a little bit blurry, but what I can represent here, so this is just the weekday peak, there was also the, the graphic that was shown for the weekend peak as well, for parking utilization. So this is pulled from that traffic, sorry, parking management plan that was done back in 2019, notably while the Beal School was still active. Let me see if I can zoom in. So, I'm looking at this map, so you have Maple Ave going along here, and then this is the intersection, Prospect Street up this way, and it goes all the way down to Gates Road. So this is the library parking, this study was done while the, the library was being reconstructed and reconfigured, and so that utilizes some of that parking lot and the design that was in place at that time. But you can see that the parking utilization here shows kind of the percentages being used during those peak hours. So the Beal School was approximately sixty to eighty percent during the noon peak weekday, obviously, while it's being utilized for the school use. And some of the most underutilized include the properties shown in light blue. A lot of them are private parking spaces, or unregulated, unregulated was the term that was given, parking spaces typically set back off of the street, and not readily visible from driving along Maple Ave or the main corridors. And so that's part of the analysis, and what ties into the town's efforts to generate additional wayfinding, to really drive parking towards those underutilized parking lots that are there, just not being used for either the inability to see them readily, or because they are part of a private development and not fitting in that kind of park once mentality, where you park in a public, public lot, and then walk to your various destinations. So, so that is part of the issue, is that, is that the, the private parking or unregulated parking is not really conducive to, you know, what would be traditionally held as a public parking space, you know, a centralized lot, or, you know, a lot that's near the core that you park in, that's readily available, you know, obviously designated as public, as public parking space. There can be confusion as, you know, can I park at, you know, for example, the, you know, the old Walgreens building, and still go to the other sites across the street, or is that just for that one use? So zoning traditionally looks at the specific site use and regulates parking related to that, and that was, again, also part of the impetus of removing site-specific parking and allowing a shared parking analysis and parking plan.
So, some of those private, I'll be late with this, but some of those private parking areas, those are included in that overall number that you're using for, so?
Correct.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Is the developer, Civicco Greenlee, going to manage the building once it's constructed?
No, we will hire a third-party property manager, and our job as developer-owner is to manage the relationship with the property manager, who then manages the tenants and any aspects of building maintenance, grounds maintenance, and the building issues that may relate to the physical plant or tenancy.
Thank you. So the thirty-five, thirty, thirty-five permanent hires and the five to seven support staff is an estimate?
That was related to the construction.
Construction only.
Oh, let me, let me pull this up, hold on. So, if you see on screen the construction job impacts, these numbers in the category where my mouse is, that's a top line, so the three-hundred-and-sixty to four-hundred-and-twenty total personnel is a, a total sum of projected construction jobs. And the estimate of permanent jobs to thirty to forty employees is based on the projected use of the commercial spaces in the building. So those, the construction is decoupled from the estimate of the permanent job impact, other than, as you see down in those two sub-numbers, the thirty to thirty-five are estimated new permanent hires for the construction company.
But they're not gonna be serving, living and serving in Shrewsbury?
That would be correct. The, and the intent, the estimate of permanent jobs, that thirty to forty employees, is based on the projected commercial, so.
Thank you. On the town's presentation regarding parking, stated that a lot of the existing parking is underutilized, the previous speaker mentioned that a lot of the parking spaces that are, were considered in that study are not public parking. Also, influences on the amount of parking that's used, is there vacant commercial property in the center of town, are there vacant commercial spaces?
Yes, there is.
Okay. And has the applicant submitted a traffic study? Is that available?
Yes, I believe it is available, yep.
And the police department has also submitted a traffic study?
No, the police department does not submit a traffic study, we have a peer-review consultant that's, that reviews Civicco's traffic study.
An outside consultant?
Correct, that the town of Shrewsbury hires.
Can the police department consider the traffic study?
They can review it, but they will not prepare their own traffic study.
They can review it?
Mm-hmm.
And have they-
And they have, it has been shared with them.
And have they submitted their comments?
No, they have not.
Will they?
We can request that, the traffic is on the schedule for the next meeting, January nineteenth.
And that would include volume of traffic at various hours?
Correct.
Accidents?
Correct.
That sort of thing?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who should be heard? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Paul Zeikis, Precinct One, do the town meeting thing there. Thank you for, for hearing us out, we, we appreciate this. During, again, I think it's important to note, I am here to represent a whole bunch of people who have been working together over the last many months, who are deeply concerned about this, so forgive me if I go on a little bit, but it's an effort to just kind of streamline it, so I don't have ten people behind me. Like some of the others, I, I had a presentation for tonight, so it might be a little disconnected, because a lot of things were said tonight that either need to be clarified, or we need to share a different, a different perspective with folks. I think we need parking first, then we need businesses, and then we need dwellings. And this is the tail wagging the dog, we're going with the dwellings, and then maybe some, some tenants that we don't, that are imaginary at this point, and, and then the parking. So, what I heard tonight about this project providing us with fifty-three additional parking spots in the center of town is absurd. You can put all the math that you want up there, you can add, subtract, multiply, and divide, the bottom line is, everybody in this room knows we have a problem with parking in the center of town. You can tell us that there's thousands of spots, but you refer to, to a study in 2019 about creating relationships with, with center-of-town businesses and homeowners. How many relationships since 2019 have we structured?
We've actually, we've actually fostered the development of the Town Center Association, which actually has a lot of-
But how many did we, how many did we create?
Can I, can I finish?
It's just, it's a number.
I, I just wanna explain a little bit of the backstory. We have worked with the Town Center Association, who's working with various businesses, that there are a lot of non-structured agreements right now for shared parking. The town of Shrewsbury is currently in negotiations with two businesses for that permanently, so.
So the answer's none?
None that I can-
None, thank you.
-see on paper, but there are businesses that have worked together.
So, since 2019, we've tried to do that. It doesn't work, it doesn't work. And neither is this twenty spots that are supposedly gonna be committed to public parking. I mean, the best one is, we're gonna have the management company looking for stickers, and if the people who reside in the units park in the public parking, they're gonna tow them? Give me a break, it's the fox guarding the hen house. That is just silly. I mean, we're, we're talking about things here that are just simply not practical or realistic, and I don't think it's fair to the people who were told throughout this entire process long ago, the planning board will deal with that, the planning board will deal with that. And I feel bad for you folks, I really do, because I think it's an unfair burden, burden on you, and obviously, we have other public officials in the room, which creates pressure, so I appreciate you, you hearing us out on this stuff. Early on, at the, at the last meeting, you talked about the possibility of, of multiple, multiple meetings and issues being discussed at multiple meetings. That led some of us to believe that that would go through the first week of March. I know you've set up a special meeting, January nineteenth now, and then the next meeting would be February first, the first week of February, rather, which is the second, thank you. Do you anticipate, and I know it's hard to tell, but in light of the fact that people were trying to schedule things, do you anticipate this going into March?
Based on my experience on this board and the items that are being addressed, I expect this to go at least through March.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your candor and your directness on that. So, there's some other things that, that we, we need to discuss, and there's, there's a lot of people who are, who are dissatisfied with, with the process, but I think, you know, advocating at, at the last meeting, and now coming in and clearing, clearly telling us that this is going to go, and it's important for the folks at home who don't understand this, the planning board requires a supermajority vote.
No, that is not true. We discussed that at the beginning, the planning board does not require a supermajority vote.
Can I finish?
Just clarifying.
Can I finish?
Go ahead.
It customarily-
If the chair allows you to continue.
It customarily requires four-
We have to, let's bring it down a little.
Four to five votes, four out of five.
It's a majority vote.
So where did the supermajority come in on this particular issue?
There was a question on the special permit. The special permit, under general areas of, of the other parts of the town that we work in, does require a supermajority.
Okay.
The state of Commonwealth of Massachusetts reworded specific zones, which this particular project falls into, that remove the supermajority requirement. That is just a majority for the special permit, but the site plan is always just majority.
Majority. So the special permit would have required four out of five, which is a supermajority.
Had the Commonwealth not-
But, we now have the Commonwealth impacting this vote, which-
On the special permit only.
On the special permit, okay, fair enough, that's a good distinction for us to know. But again, we went from four to five to three to two, and to some people, it's simplistic math, and I just wanna clarify that, that that was dictated by the Commonwealth as opposed to town hall.
The one thing that, you know, I read the town council's letter, and the one thing that I haven't been able to take a look at, is whether, to what extent this board's interpretation of a zoning bylaw is entitled to some deference, and I am not certain, because, and I haven't talked into Attorney Madouse about it, to what extent any of these defined terms within this statute have to be a defined term within our zoning bylaw. Because, because I'm not sure they sink, but-
Sure.
Again, you know, I think, at least on its face, if, if you read the statute, it appears that it would be a simple majority, three to two vote, but- it appears that it would be a simple majority, three to two vote, but I haven't looked as to how that syncs with our own zoning bylaw.
I'm sure-
But forty, forty A is the, you know, the Zoning Enabling Act. But again, our statute, I mean, our, our zoning bylaws, I'd, I'd have to take a look at it.
That's, that, that sounds great, and, and to the extent that you can confirm that, that's, you know, helpful.
I would take a look at it for the next meeting.
I know you guys have enough to do, but, uh, that, that would be, that would be terrific.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just on that, um, I just want to note that, um, that statute, that minima of vote was actually looked at with, um, Town Council, the Planning Board, and the zoning enforcement, or sorry, the, uh, Planning Department and the zoning enforcement officers. Our determination that it does meet the locational and affordability requirements and would be the simple majority vote.
I get it, but to the extent that any of those people sit on this board, I, I think it's, I, I think this board has a crack at that issue, has to take a look at that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodolakis. So, the, the reason for that likely, um, going from a supermajority to a, uh, a, a simple majority is because of the affordable housing component, is that correct, largely?
Largely.
Um, can, can the developer tell us, uh, again, how much a one-bedroom will be for rent and how much a two-bedroom will be?
I'm taking a moment to find those slides, but I can tell you about methodology, which is, it's based on the-
I, we just need to know the numbers, we don't, methodology.
Just a rough idea, what, what, what's the rent going to be for the one-bedroom or the two-bedroom?
I want to say eighteen hundred to twenty-four hundred? That's coming from memory, but-
With the market rates.
Market rates, is it?
Yes, for one-bedroom. And I don't know-
So, I can jump to another question, but if you could give us those numbers before-
Sorry, I have provided those numbers in the past, and, um, if, if it's the board's desire, we could bring a table next time, if it's helpful.
You could do that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
So, one bedroom will be a minimum of eighteen hundred dollars? Is that fair to say?
I think that if I can bring a table next time, then it's probably prudent, I just bring the table and we discuss it then.
That's market rate, Paul.
Sure. Yep, I understand. Um, the, the reality is, these are going to be, um, fairly costly. I understand market rate and all that good stuff. The, the truth is, this, this, this is, this is a public a, uh, asset. We've signed an LDA. The deal isn't done until, uh, the permits are, are provided. And this is a town asset, it's four acres. It's four acres. There should be no special consideration given. There wasn't a special consideration given to the price, so there's no hardship with respect to the investment of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a four-acre parcel. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the acquisition price. And it's important, because the gentleman referred to, um, remediation costs. That is inaccurate, what you read, sir. And it is three hundred and ten thousand dollars to demolish that building and clean up any asbestos. That was in a hazardous conditions report, um, and that was put out by the town. So, that was the town's vendor, and that was three hundred and ten thousand dollars, sir. So, unfortunately, that, uh, information that was out in the public, um, is misleading. So, when you talk about, you know, we need to go higher than the thirty-five feet, we need this setback and that setback, and parking on the side of the building, no, we don't. What we need is less units. This is exceptionally dense for that area, so let's get into the meat of it. Can we start talking about making this less dense? Because quite frankly, we're at fifty-five units. The first RFP that was submitted, the, the answer to the RFP, and you know this, answer to the RFP was fifty residential units. Fifty. So, fifty comes through, they negotiate for seven months, we end up at sixty-five, we come down to fifty-five. We're still percent, ten percent over what the initial submission was. So, I think, um, the density is an important factor here, and although, um, you know, it's been said several times by leadership tonight, um, not your board, um, but, uh, 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 that, that it's not the responsibility of a single developer to create parking for the entire town center. It's town-owned land. So, now, we're selling this, and we're out looking, we're structuring deals to buy properties right around there for far more than the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we're selling this for. So, let's get back to basics. If the town is looking to buy additional land for the purpose of parking, lower the number of units and put in more public parking. This is simple. But I'm very concerned the town's advocating for this project consistently, over and over again. It does not, does not look good. Especially when we've just been hit with a CPA tax. You all got your tax bills this week, you saw it. If you didn't, go look at it. CPA tax to buy open space, to buy preservation land, to do cool things with, like have a ball field and a tot lot and some parking. Oh, that's Beale, I forgot. On the fiscal stuff, um, the, the math, the math is flawed. You can look at it any way that you want. If you look at the analysis and you balance it out, it's nine point one students. What we saw tonight was five students being used there. It's not practical, it's not realistic, and, um, it's misleading. Again, the reality is, it does cost us, I don't know who said it, four, thirteen, five, fourteen thousand dollars per student, times nine students, hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. You take the, uh, number of, uh, revenue at one hundred and ninety-two thousand, so let's take the low number rather than the high number, and you take that, uh, a hundred and twenty-six thousand off with twenty-three thousand on fire and police calls, now you got that down to, uh, to less than fifty thousand. If we have other extenuating circumstances, you know, with, with a school child, special needs, whatever it might be, I agree. I think this is, uh, revenue neutral at the end of the day. To, to bring in people because we're going to fill fifty-five units at the center of town to go, uh, do business with the existing businesses in the center of town, there aren't going to be any existing businesses, 'cause there's nowhere to park. Right now, in the block building, there was approved on the upper level, six units, six units. So, in the hail drug building, upper level, six units, uh, I believe, if I'm correct, four one-bedroom units, and please correct me if I'm wrong, and one two-bedroom unit, and one three-bedroom unit. That is nine parking spots that are going to be allotted for that.
Mr. Chair, can I just, and this is not, um, correct information, and we're getting a little bit off topic, so-
Please clarify, please.
No, we're not talking about the hail block, we're talking about one through seven Maple Avenue right now.
We need to have a focus on this site.
I'm, I'm just trying to, in, clarify, the needs for parking are extreme in the center of town. So, when-
Paul, can you ask a question?
Yeah. Absolutely.
Ask a question.
Yep.
That, that, that would simplify things.
Can you clarify the dates of, um, the Shrewsbury Master Plan, the Town Center Pa, Parking Management Plan, the Town Center Study, and the pedestrian safety and walkability? Can you put that slide back up?
Yeah, I can put the slide back up, but the Shrewsbury Master Plan was, uh, completed in two thousand and sixteen, the Shrewsbury Town Center Parking Management Plan, completed in two thousand and eighteen, the Shrewsbury Town Center Study, uh, in two thousand and nineteen, uh, as well as the pedestrian safety and walkability in the Shrewsbury Town Center, uh, was done in two thousand and nineteen as well.
Thank you. So, those studies, some of them are as much as six years old. And the fifty-three parking spots, um, fifty-three net parking spots, um, what's your confidence level that this, this project creates fifty-three, a net gain of fifty-three parking spaces?
That net gain is calculated off of the existing ninety-three parking spaces currently at the Beale site, subtracted of the, uh, units or the parking spaces that are proposed on the site. A hundred and forty-six total spaces.
So, so tell me that again, right now, today, there's ninety-six parking spaces at Beale?
Ninety-three parking spaces at Beale.
Okay.
There's a hundred and forty-six spaces proposed, including the public parking spaces.
Okay. But we haven't been using the parking at Beale until recently, and there's about ten cars that park there that use the multifamily next door.
Again, which speaks to the underutilization that was discussed, uh, in that report and, um, in the presentation that I made.
But we're putting fifty-five units there, so how do we get the, the net gain?
So, a hundred and sixteen spaces, uh, of the proposed development are going to be serving, uh, the uses on site, and then there's an additional, uh, four, uh, forty spaces that'll be dedicated as public parking.
And would it be, um, reasonable to, uh, to get a commitment on the use of the, uh, point seven acres prior to this board voting for, for or against this proposal?
What do you mean by that?
So, we have point seven acres that is going to, uh, be returned to the town.
Correct.
So, we're typically told about these open and public and transparent processes where the town will be able to, the residents, the town residents will actually be able to influence it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can we do that before the vote rather than after?
I can discuss that with a select board.
The developer's going to close on the, assuming there's all, something goes forward on this site, Paul.
Yep.
The developer is going to close on the site, and presumably-
Correct.
There's going to be an A and R plan, uh, submitted for the point seven acres.
Yep.
And contemporaneously, at the closing, the town's going to get a deed for the point seven acres.
Understood.
Okay? I, I think that's the way it's going to work.
We just like a commitment from the town of what we're going to do with that, rather than-
What, what the town's going to do with?
Correct. So, that would be, uh, something that would be important, because we've got all that space now going from four acres to the point seven. It'd be wonderful to get that answer rather than relying on having that materialize after the fact. It may, if you're going to do something superproductive with it, I think it would be an incentive to push the proposal forward, right?
Can, I know you've got a number of other questions, and I know you're speaking for a lot of people, but I did-
Can we stop talking about parking tonight?
Right. Can we, can we move on a little bit on this? I mean, I know that we're going to be revisiting some of these things over and over again, but I'm asking-
Listen, you, you've been kind enough, and I appreciate the fact that you've committed to going to March with this, and I'll be back, and no disrespect, but we'll keep the communication going. So, I thank you guys for your time, and, and I know you get paid big bucks for doing this, so.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience which should be heard? Yes, ma'am.
Hello?
Hi.
Julie Ross, eighteen- Haskell Street. Um, as I've said before, I live across at third base, uh, at the field, so what happens here is, um, obviously going to affect me. Just a couple of things I want to bring up here. I had promised that I would ask about the shadows. I'm back here for shadows. I also, um, address in headlights and mitigation, specific to site plan, but, you know, I want to just mention a thing or two. Lots of things have been discussed here, um, that go beyond just the site plan. And I want to try to bring it back to the site plan itself. When, this was first trying, uh, proposed, a lot of us in the neighborhood really wanted to make sure we were able to maintain the park. And even to this day, I want to say that great parks make great places. So, you know, it's really important, I know it's, um, premature, but long-term, I really think that if we do our best to limit the externalities that are going to happen, and I, I should mention, I am a retired professional planner. I was a regional planner for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Department of Environmental Protection, for twenty-five years. So, I also have, and I've been to planning school, I've got the degrees, I've got the experience. I know the unenviable position that you're in. This is all based on modeling, you're all trying to predict the future, it's next to impossible to do that. But if we're smart now, when we're going through the process of developing the whole thing, we have Plan B, Plan C that we can work on. So, that's where I'm going to try to focus a lot of my effort at talking to you. It's about what's going to happen in the future. Number one, I want to say about all this parking, um, working for the Department of Environmental Protection, where cars do a lot of damage to the environment, whether it's what's coming out of tailpipes, what's leaking off of the bottom of them, uh, and whatnot, and having to predict what need is going to be five years from now for that one person who's not going to be able to get a parking spot at Christmas time, and plan that to have everything paved over for that one car that may or may not be there in ten years, is not really good for anybody. Living at third base, I want a park there, I don't want a parking lot there that's covered over with pavement, that all that stuff is running down into some of my neighbors at the bottom of the hill. Um, you know, I really want to try to preserve that. I like the idea of having more, more than one car use it. Otherwise, we're just going to have everything paved, most of it empty all the time. It's a really good idea from, from many, many points of view. I also want to point out that I've noticed many times, this is a pedestrian-oriented development. The idea is to kind of bring people in. I have them walk. I'll be walking, I'm not going to drive across the street to go over there. You know, I live there. With that in mind, I don't necessarily want people in my yard to try to be there either. The whole idea is to bring people in by walking. And so, under that big mantle of what we're, you know, the town's trying to achieve here, I, I recognize that some of the goals that you're doing is spot-on. I mean, you should be in the places where you ought to do this. But with that in mind, I mean, just kind of getting back to the parking, and I'm going to keep it real quick, I'm not going to rant, rave about numbers, for sure, but in your long-range planning, are you thinking that you might have to take away some of that point seven and go back to point three acres of land for a leftover park? Keeping in mind, my point of view is that great parks make great places. You'll probably get more customers coming to the cafes, coming, if they've got a nice shady place at the end of the street where they can sit there and they can enjoy their lunch, and then maybe take a half-mile walk back to work, whatever. Um, you know, it's kind of that whole idea of having that open space. So, I really want to make sure it doesn't come down. I was hoping, when I first heard this whole thing, you might put in twenty places, twenty residential, and we'd have like, you know, the existing park that we have now. It won't be a ball field, because, you know, it's going to end at third base, which means if somebody hits a ball, it's going right through a windshield or right through somebody's, you know, pitcher window. So, it's obviously not going to be used as a ball field anymore. So, we'd have the opportunity, and I mentioned this once before, what do we want that parking, that park to be? You know, a pickleball court, a dog park, you know, a mother's rest, the, the, the current, you know, we really need to work with the town on what we want that to be. And we, the people that are going to use it, really need to be asked those questions. So, planning board, please kind of keep that in mind. I noticed, my first career before I changed, went back to college and did all that stuff and changed jobs, I drove a commercial vehicle. I noticed in this new plan that the, the dumpsters were moved. Hooray! That actually gives somebody that's got a truck to drive room where they can pull up and back into those dumpsters and be able to, um, drop them off. Before, there was, the only way that would happen is if you could pick the truck up, turn it around, and drop it back down. I've been in parking lots where the bus expected us to do that. And I can tell you about every bush they planted got wiped out, but soon as a guy from some other town that didn't recognize you, couldn't follow the little lines, it wouldn't work. So, that was a smart move. But the dump trucks, or the, the trash trucks, who still have a smaller wheelbase than fire trucks. I'm still worried about the, the configuration of it, and I'm not sure that a, a fire truck is going to be able to turn around in that lot. That's a public safety issue. It's also, um, brings us to the commercial property in the front, somebody's got to make deliveries. So, back to, to Haskell Street, where the truck's going to go. If they can't get in there for, to, to, to make their deliveries, how are the truckers going to do that? How are they going to get in there to make their, their deliveries? And that's a, a real wheelbase issue. You know, I, if you've never drove, driven around with somebody in a commercial vehicle, find somebody, go drive around with them for a day. I'm telling you, it'll amaze, amaze you how hard it is to try to get a big vehicle around in small places. I have brought a forty-five-foot bus up and over Beacon Hill in Boston and cleared cars, I kid you not, by a half an inch. Amazing myself, I could do it. But, you know, it, it's really an issue, and it's a public safety issue. I always said that if I cannot get my bus down here, a fire truck can't get down in there either. And that's really an issue. So, um, and, and lastly, when it comes to all the parking that's going to be on Haskell Street, is that going to be on one side or is that going to be on two sides? Because if it's going to be on two sides, then several years ago, we had a big issue in the town about widening the street, and now I have a marker there in the front that, um, is going to take my front yard.
My, excuse me, my understanding is it'll all be on one side. It'll be on the side of where the school is.
Your long-range park, or plans, however, going to plan, you know, the stipulation when the externalities kind of kick in, and we find out that, gee, that wasn't working, so what are we going to do now? Will eventually it have to, um, wa, allow parking on both sides? Or will it be prohibited, and who's going to enforce that?
Well, we don't have that answer at this time.
Okay, that's good. Put it on the list, and we'll get back to it. I'm not dropping the idea of shadows. I know that I'm going to probably be free of that, it won't be an issue, but I have neighbors-
I believe they, they may have an exhibit for you.
Okay, that's great, 'cause I, and, and also the headlights. My last thing is, somebody the other day, last week, I think they went to the chiropractor, I'm not sure, but they left their car idling for an over an hour. I'm not sure, but they left their car idling for over an hour and the headlights from that went right into my face. I was trying to have a conversation with my husband, I was literally like this trying to, because I could not get those lights out of my face. So, now it's not a projection that I'm at 635 feet and the parking lot's at 645 feet and the headlights, I know where they're gonna be, they're gonna be in my face.
Okay.
It will be further down.
We'll inch down.
But again, asking for mitigation, some kinda shrubbery, something to try to prevent that.
Yes.
I have an 1870s house, it's got beautiful old trim, I don't wanna have to cover it all over with drapes. I like the inside of my house, I don't wanna have to hide it all.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Can you please?
JTA and this is a shadow study, as you can see on screen. So, Joe, can you just walk through this?
Joe Strummer from The Architect. So, we have the shadow study for you and so I believe your home is located in the lower-left corner beyond where this is. So, we have the winter solstice equinox and summer solstice here demonstrated at 9:00 AM, midday and 3:00 PM. And so, you can see that the winter solstice would be the time of year where you would be most impacted if shadows were to enter your property. And you can see at the 3:00 PM, all the shadow is going northeast because the sun is in the southwest. So, at no point would the shadow, even in the winter solstice, cross your property line.
I see that behind it though, the folks on Chase Terrace probably are more of an issue with that than we would. The morning light in the, is that the top left?
Yep.
And that is in the winter?
That's 9:00 AM winter solstice, yep. So, that shadow actually creeps over onto Maple Avenue.
Oh, so that's from Maple Street.
Yeah, so Maple's up there, Haskell is...
Where's my house on that again? I'm sorry.
You're about here, if we're using this box.
I can't see that across.
So, you're down on the lower left. So, this is Haskell, this way?
Okay.
So, you're down, actually, your plan, your house isn't shown on this because none of the shadow actually leaves this page towards your home.
Okay, so the back on that what I'm seeing would be pretty much where the fence line is now for the current parking lot or down by where it's gonna be.
Correct, on the right-hand side, that's the fence line.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, so in other words, it's not gonna come across and hit the Haskell Street side?
No.
Pretty much it'll just go only as far as the middle of the street?
Correct.
That's exactly what I wanna hear. You know, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm a good girl, you know, don't guess what I wanna hear, tell me what I need to know. And I'll move the stuff that needs the sun and I'll put it where I have a shady yard. I'll move it, you know, I chase the sun with tomato pots all summer long to catch the sun at certain times of day, you know, really.
Yeah, thank you.
But you should be all set.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's that?
It's going along.
Yes, we are going along. Is there anyone else in the audience who wants to be heard? Please.
Hi, I'm Karen. Hi, I'm Karen, I love ya. I live at the bottom of the field on Wesland Street, 19 Wesland Street. We've been, my family's been there since 1961. So, we've seen a lot of traffic, we've seen a lot of changes in town. I think whatever you're saying is very helpful, I appreciate you, as Paul is saying, as everybody is saying. I think some of the questions about like Chase Terrace, his concern there was legitimate and Julie's concern is legitimate and I would think, I assume you guys are looking at when one person's asking about, say, shadowing or headlights in their front yard, I assume you're looking at not just those individuals but everybody, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's great, good to hear. And I just had a couple of quick questions. One was on the diagrams where it's showing like the trees and the greens, which I think you were alluding to. I can't tell from those diagrams, you guys can. So, it's more like down at Spags, when I'm looking at the trees down at Spags or the green down at Spags, that's sort of, I can't tell if that's what you mean, which is very little, or if you mean much more abundant than that. And maybe that's something you're gonna speak to later, because I think you were asking that question. So, and I don't know if you can answer that now and that you may, you probably know the Spags one, of course, yeah? As I fear to say, I bring that up because in that particular, that was a park there that was donated and in the neighborhood and then they lost it to a parking lot. So, I think just with this project, as it goes further, we wanna make sure it stays as green as possible. I know one of the main concerns in the town of the top 10 was open green space and there was someone last month who spoke to that and she was very concerned about revisiting the dynamics of the parking, of the cement, of the tar, of the asphalt. My dad, mom passed this spring and in some ways, I'm glad they're gone to not see it, not that it's a bad thing, but it's sort of a big change in the area. But I know one of my dad's major concerns, this is going back to 1961, was the water. He had, he put a berm at the front of the property because there was water pouring in and he, the town did put in more drainage, but I don't know if there's water concerns that are being addressed.
The water concerns will be addressed on our site plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
You know, this has been going on tonight, but I was the one that had expressed concerns for six...
Could you please identify yourself, please?
Pete Yablonski, representing the residents at 16 Chase Terrace. And we had asked about issues that were just concerning that property line. And I think if, you know, a major part of this is looking for variance. I mean, we're looking to cut setbacks. And the thing is, is if we're, whatever happens along that property line, especially if we're gonna stack it with parking, with that parking lot, it's very hard for us as residents to make some sort of a decision when I feel like the information is incomplete. So, I'm here at the meeting tonight and, okay, we see that we've changed the configuration of the parking lot, but there's no backup grading, there's no, I mean, simply understanding the planting. I mean, we really need to dive into the details. If you want educated decisions and you want people to make decisions and much to the last person's comments about, you know, what does this look like? We need more detail and it's not there to make a proper decision at a meeting, you know?
Pete, did your client receive the information that the applicant provided?
I did. I got it at noon time today.
Okay, so you haven't...
To forward it to them.
Okay.
To, you know, it's like, if we're gonna go into the next meeting and talk about landscape and talk about green space and talk about the details and the permeables and all these things that are really relevant for the planning board to make a proper decision, it just needs to be better because there's still way too many unanswered questions and that's, that doesn't even deal with all of these other, you know, issues for the rest of the neighbors. So...
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Yes, sir.
I'm from 124 Memorial Drive on 140. My question is very simple. This is a planning board meeting. We're considering the whole town being affected by developments around town. So, while we discuss this particular development here, my question is regarding the whole town. When would the development be complete? 2025 approximately? So, do we have an idea about how many units are come, how many developments are coming into town and be completed by 2025, 2027? Do we have an exact idea about how many units are coming into our town as a whole?
I think our town has a housing production plan.
Yeah, I don't have numbers top of mind, but we do...
That's fine, you can answer it next time.
Yeah, but we...
So, with that question in mind, I would like to inform and also ask this question to the planning board. Do we have a sense of how many resources are required to support this whole new exist, I mean, whole new developments that are coming into town? Starting with water and the next is schools. The schools are already overwhelmed. It kept, I mean, our high school is actually almost 500-plus, more than capacity. So, it cannot take one student more and we are talking about almost a thousand unit development here. So, where do all these kids go?
This is not a thousand units.
Approximately. I said anywhere between 500 to 1,000 units.
In this, not in this site?
The whole town, I'm talking the whole town.
I understand.
Yes, yes.
We can only deal with the sites that are in front of us and we don't know what people are gonna do with their land, so I can't answer that question.
That's exactly what, when I said, what I meant when I said by 2025 or 2027, when we plan to complete this project and the rest of the project, do we have a fair idea about how much more, how many more schools do we need?
I can answer that.
Yes, please.
So, the assistant town planner, Rowan McAllister, did present a memorandum to the board, to the select board this summer with a projection of number of units for larger-scale residential from now until 2020, 2030. So, that information is available through the select board's office.
I understand. So, the information also has the number of kids that would be coming into, new kids that would be coming into our schooling districts, right?
We could do that projection just as a matter of information and I don't wanna get too far off course. We are seeing a decline in population for schoolchildren over time and the school department can present that, but again, I don't wanna get too off track.
Yes, I would like that to be presented to the town, I mean, the planning board. In fact, just because of the fact that...
So, I understand your position of what you're talking about, the grander plan of the plan, but I, we are running very late this evening.
I understand.
I take your point. The town is aware of the similar concerns that you have. I'd ask that if you don't have anything specific about this site, could I, could I please just move on?
Well, this all falls into that particular plan.
I understand that it does, but you're starting to take a more 50,000-foot view. We're trying to get a little closer, okay?
Yes, for the general public view also because we will have to go through the overrides again for development of new schools. So, that's a huge concern for us in particular, for the rest of the town.
That's not an asylum violation. So, we gotta live with the rules we got.
I understand. But I would love to get a rather pretty, I mean, 50,000-foot view.
I think you can, you can visit Town Hall and visit Mr. McGoldrick and he can certainly provide all the information you're looking for.
The planning department would certainly love to entertain that discussion of the larger site context.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Okay. Entertaining a motion to continue this public hearing until September 19.
No, it's September.
Oh, September, my apologies.
Only feels that way.
All right, can, just one last question, please.
One.
And please try to make it not a speech, a specific pointed question, okay? If you could, please.
I just have those questions pop out of my head. So, I don't live around the Beale community, but I believe this affects everybody in Shrewsbury. Because I have a high school, like Shrewsbury High School, so I have so many time, I need to pick them up. So, I feel what's the traffic in town center, it's already a bottleneck. It's such a pain to cross.
So, if your question's regarding traffic, we're gonna have that discussion at our next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
And the town is also entertaining, we have a consultant doing a town center-wide traffic and transportation and multimodal study that we will be engaging the public in as well over the next few weeks.
Okay, so then, then just two quick thoughts. So, one is since we're going to have like a big community, so I bet there will be students. So, how about a school bus? So, where the school bus stop or where the school bus, you know, because it's already crowded on the main street. Also, are we going to bring more bus stops, like a public, for public transportation for such a big new community?
Like, I think both of those could be answered in more detail, the traffic related to the larger site traffic.
So, at our next meeting, we'll be able to position.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I'm gonna ask that, I'm gonna close questions off right now simply because I still have a lot of other hearings to go through, keeping in mind that we are gonna be back and although we are going to have pointed discussions, it doesn't mean that we're not gonna veer off like we have today. So, if your item hasn't been discussed today or if you have more information that you're gonna be able to review and you can maybe do us a favor and rather than coming in and giving a great oration behind your question, just try to have the questions very specific and pointed and we'll try to have them answered, okay? I appreciate that on our behalf, okay? With that, I want to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing, whatever you wanna do.
I move that we continue the Beale Common Site Plan approval and special permit until Thursday, January 19th at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, as you're leaving, if you could just please keep your conversations at a low level so that we can continue at our meeting. Thank you.
That's it. Set the air.
Okay, our next... I'll let them clear out for a minute. Our next public hearing is a continued public hearing for proposed warehouse and distribution facility, site plan approval, Shrewsbury Land Property Owner LLC, location is 440 Hartford Turnpike. We have a letter here requesting continuance based on the information, this has been continued several times, this has got to do with the peer review for, I believe, a wall construction. So, does anybody have any questions or comments relative to the continuance? It looks like they're moving along and hopefully they'll be ready for us at our next meeting.
Supposedly they will be.
Yeah, I have no comments, no comments.
Can I entertain a motion to continue the public hearing?
I move that we continue the public hearing for site plan approval, Shrewsbury Land Property Owner LLC, 440 Hartford Turnpike to our February 2nd, 2023 meeting at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And Mr. Rollick, Rollick, Roda Lake has had recused himself from that. He will be back in a moment. Will bring us to our next public hearing, which is a continued public hearing for proposed automobile dealership, site plan approval, Box Shrewsbury Worcester LLC, location is 701 Boston Turnpike. Mr. Rickert.
Thank you, Jim and members of the board, once again, for the record. My name is Richard Rickert and I'm an attorney with offices at 11 Maple Avenue and I'm here representing Box Subaru of New England. I'm here together with Patrick Healy from Thompson Liston Associates. He's the, our professional engineer on this particular project. Also, Maureen McQ from McMahon Associates, the traffic, our traffic engineer, and Mike Clemmie is the principal of the applicant, he is with us as well. We have finished the ZBA process, as you know. The decision has been published and we expect that to be recorded hopefully within the next week or so. The conservation process has been concluded, so that is completed. We have not filed with you updated plans incorporating all of the various things that we've talked about in the previous hearings and I understand from Patrick that he's working on that and we'll expect to have that for you in the very near future, so we understand this will be continued for that purpose as well as the peer review responses from our traffic engineer. You haven't seen those yet and you will very shortly. We thought they were gonna go out last week, at least I did, there was just a miscue on our part and you will have them very shortly. Our engineer needs to add some comments to it, so again, that will be with you shortly. So, knowing this is gonna be a continued hearing, I just wanted to let you know what's coming. With respect to South Street, well, first of all, we've determined that the MEPA process does need to be complied with. I believe it's an EMF is gonna be filed. Patrick, if you wanna address that any further, feel free.
So, I'm Patrick Healy from Thompson Liston Associates. I heard this morning actually from the assistant director of MEPA answering some of our inquiries about how to count the parking spaces versus the inventory and how the impervious surface would be counted. So, they did confirm that we do need to file an EMF due to the parking space and impervious coverage. due to the, uh, parking space and impervious cover thresholds. So, we'll be putting, uh, putting that together. Uh, that will allow us, now that we know that, we can answer some of, uh, Assistant Planner, uh, Louise's questions about the environmental impacts of the site and the project.
Do you have a rough idea how long it's gonna take to get the M E P A process completed?
Um, I, I would expect that to take three to five months to get through.
Yeah, that can take a while. Sometimes it does require some changes to plans. In this particular case, I'm not so sure that it would. This is a fairly low-impact project for a twenty-five acre site, so.
So, if I might, the, the substance of that application would be the state permit that's required. The only state permit that we require is the curb cut from, uh, Mass D O T. But we do have to answer other environmental impact questions as part of that process. So, uh, for example, uh, stormwater, uh, tree clearing, uh, other, other areas of interest, uh, to D E P, and other environmental and traffic agencies would have to be answered. It, it does take some time. It's an advertised process. It goes out for public, uh, comment in the newspaper. There's a prescribed, uh, time period involved, and, uh, the, the M E P A reviewer with input from various agencies and officials would, uh, come up with the, the mitigation that's required, which could, which could be plan changes, or it could be, uh, the traffic management plan or something like that. So, depending on the project, it could result in plan changes. Uh, more often than not, it's, it's things beyond the site plan itself.
So, um... But in order for us to go forward, in order for us to continue to address your concerns and, and, and other concerns, we, we want to and we need to address the South Street entrance egress. Knowing that, uh, the Z B A heard us out on that issue, uh, they, in their, uh, decision, allowed us a right-in, uh, right-out access egress. And, um, we were also allowed, and we're, we're asking you to allow us to use our delivery trucks, trucks on hours that are not, uh, the busy hours. For instance, uh, seven to nine in the morning and four, four to six at night, uh, we would have signage that prohibits any truck traffic and, and exiting the property at that time, or, and its only exit, as you know. And any exiting of the property would require a truck to actually sit on the property waiting for traffic. If there was any traffic there, there wouldn't be any queuing on South Street whatsoever. So, uh, we are asking for that to be the standard, uh, for our use of the South Street access egress. I believe that you received recently, uh, comments from, uh, D O T, um, a very brief comment via an email, which suggests, I would suggest to you, that two entrances and exits on, on Route nine is not, uh, a likely possibility and not a viable possibility, uh, would be frowned upon by D O T for their various reasons. They also pointed out that, uh, from their point of view, a full access South Street entrance, exit would be proper and appropriate. We are not asking for that. We're suggesting to you that, uh, the Z B A did the right thing, and we're asking you to, uh, agree that that would be the right way to handle this. It is important to note that Subaru of New England, as we pointed out at the last meeting, owns and operates its own delivery trucks. So, they can handle the issue of when those trucks come in and out of the property. They can dictate that to their own employees, and, uh, they should be able to do that. As was mentioned at another hearing earlier, um, it, it is perhaps not necessarily appropriate for our site to be expected to correct what is already a problem at an intersection that is already an E-intersection. Uh, we, we will address our use happily, and I suggest to you respectfully that we are doing that by restricting the truck traffic during those busy peak hours. With that in mind, um, obviously, we need some help from you in terms of, uh, discussing this particular issue so that we can finish the plans for you for the next meeting. Um, we understand slopes, uh, need to be, uh, reviewed. We'll address that through our engineer, dealing with the engineering department and with the planners. And I understand that there's retaining walls on our site that needs specific building permits and specific geotechnical engineering. Um, again, that's something that, uh, Patrick will, uh, address through planning and engineering. So, uh, these, this is an ongoing process, we understand. We know we have to come back, but in order to facilitate an orderly process and hopefully, uh, to get through this, uh, we would hope that we can address the South Street access egressation.
So, uh, Mr. Chair-
And we have, and we have Maureen here, if, if you have any specific questions about, um, the, um, traffic study.
So, Richard, I have a question just about how we move forward. You, you guys are gonna file your environmental notification form, and presumably, M E P A's gonna send that out to everybody, including to the guy at MassDOT who just gave you the comments. Say he's gonna submit a, more than likely, a comment letter consistent with his email, saying he's recommending a full access from South Street.
They don't have the jurisdiction to require that. So, you, you have the jurisdiction on that issue.
I, I understand, but he's, he's gonna issue that, just like we don't have the jurisdiction to tell them where they, where, where they can put the curb cuts.
Right.
So, are, are we confident that, are, are we confident that the right-in, right-out is gonna satisfy the M E P A process?
Um, Maureen? I know Maureen saw our response today from Mr. Misho from M D M, who also agreed that the right-in, right-out was sort of the compromised position.
Yeah, Mr. Misho was cognizant that this project had to go through M E P A.
Yes, I believe he's aware of that.
It was in response to the email, privately.
Yeah, okay, 'cause I mean, we discussed it in the last meeting, okay.
So, ba- based upon the, uh, vote that was made by the zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Chair, I have revised the driveway configuration. I would like to put that on the screen for your benefit of the staff's perspective. It's not a final plan, but, you know, I'd like you to see what the driveway configuration is that we're, we're discussing. So, over on the right side there, um, is South Street. Route nine is at the bottom of the screen. So, you can see we reconfigured that driveway, uh, to create a raised, uh, triangular island that separates the, the traffic. So, it turns, could, uh, southbound traffic on South Street could turn directly into the site, but exiting traffic would be forced to go to the right. Uh, not only is there an island on our site, but there's a right, raised island directly across at the Price Chopper driveway. So, there's really no way for, you know, traffic to circumvent this. I think it was in, uh, point raised by Mr. Misho at the last meeting, to be sure that this was configured in such a way that folks couldn't make the illegal, uh, left-hand turn, and I think we've accomplished that. He hasn't seen this yet, um, and he will get the opportunity to before we next meet with you.
So, you're saying that teardrop shape, that's gonna also have to be an additional raised island?
No, that, that, uh, is already there.
That's the existing striping.
That's the existing striping on, on the road itself. But the, the, uh, island that you see to the right of that, coming out of the Price Chopper driveway, is a raised island right there.
Right here.
So-
So, that's our raised island, and that's theirs.
This is a raised island here.
So, the, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Sorry.
The, so your raised island, the line that goes up the driveway, what is gonna be on that line?
It's a double yellow stripe that's proposed.
Is there a way to, I mean, I'm probably getting ahead of myself here, raise that somehow to ensure that people don't go down and try to go left out of there? So, have a middle, something in the middle that ensures that someone's not gonna go down and be like, ah, no one's coming. I'm just gonna take a quick left there and go out. Have some sort of raised island, I don't wanna call it an island, some sort of raised structure in the middle. I know-
I think, I mean, that's kinda-
You know, you understand what I'm saying?
Right.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, are you talking about in South Street or in the driveway?
That. Somehow raise that so someone can't just decide they're gonna go down and go left out of there if they feel like it. They, they're gonna be, they're gonna have to travel to the right to deter them from going towards the left.
I mean, that's kind of an extreme circumstance for someone to try to make that leap.
The queues don't extend on the site very long, so I don't know why someone would... If there's nothing holding them up, why would they feel the need to?
So, we tried to position that driveway such that, you know, we moved it further away from Route nine so that that triangle actually, uh, sort of, you know, blocks people from, you know, the opportunity to, to make an illegal move.
How many feet away is that from the intersection of Route nine, Patrick?
I don't have a dimension on that, and I, I can't really scale it on, on this particular drawing. Uh, if you give me a moment, I can, I can answer that.
Less than, less than the number of feet between their curb cut on Route nine? Approximately two hundred and something.
That's more than two, yeah. How many feet from Route nine is that curb cut there? Yeah, so, um, you may answer the question. From the stop line at the Route nine intersection to the center of that, uh, raised island is two hundred and eighty-five feet.
Two eighty-five?
Yes, sir.
About a dozen cars, two or three.
Is that a twelve by question?
How many cars does that compute to in terms of queuing?
Oh, approximately, you can use twenty feet per car generally.
Fourteen cars?
Twelve, twelve to fourteen, I suppose, yeah.
Okay.
Hey, do you have anything else to add before I open up to other questions?
Um, do, no, do you have anything else you wanna add?
If there's specific questions, traffic related.
You also have?
No, I just wanted to make sure the Board saw, you know, what, what the, what the driveway looks like based upon the zoning board, uh, condition of approval.
Mr. Rao, do you have any questions at this time?
Um, I think, I, I'm glad to hear that the M E P A, I mean, you'll have to go through M E P A process, and sometimes during the process, even though they may not have, the, the Mass D O T may not have authority on the South Street, just because of the comment the E E A Executive of Environmental Affairs receives, M E P A may put in some language there to take care of issues like this. So, I think in terms of the timeline, it's maybe premature for us to say, yes, this is okay, not, not okay at this stage. We'll have to wait till, uh, it goes through M E P A process and see what they say.
Mr. Jerry?
Uh, we got the information late today from Mr. Misho, but maybe Chris knows the answer to this. But, um, I recall looking at it correctly, and he was in favor of the right-in, right-out, as, as been suggested and what Z B A said. Um, but he, if I recall correctly, suggested that no truck traffic be allowed out of that driveway at any point, not just restricted hours, but at any point, so, um...
And that's why I, that's why I pressed that issue.
Right.
Yes.
So, I'm just trying to figure how we're gonna reconcile that, um...
Well, you'll agree with us, I hope.
You didn't waste a second there, did you?
I can't afford to.
Um, you know, without having had time, I guess, to review his thought process behind that, I just, you know, I'm, I'm trying, there's no rationale given there, and I was unaware of where Z B A came out in terms of why they thought that was practical. So, I'm just trying to figure where we're making a call on that.
Perhaps my, uh, perhaps, uh, Maureen could-
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I can, um, I, I did have some, it's anecdotal at this point, but I did have some conversations, not with Bob Misho yet, um, uh, but with the representative of MassDOT, as well as the, uh, Town Engineer, in terms of the, the right-in, right-out, uh, access. Um, and I think largely there's a somewhat of a consensus that the MassDOT, um, perspective is looking at, you know, traffic impacts along Route nine in the Mass D O T, um, uh, jurisdiction, whereas the peer review engineer is, is certainly looking from the local roads and that jurisdiction. And it, it's just a, a, a matter of different perspectives of, of where you're looking at the, the traffic impacts and, and, um, and mitigating those. In discussions of that with, uh, the Town Engineer, um, they did feel that, um, at least anecdotally, that the, uh, right-in, right-out solution is an appropriate measure, um, uh, to, to mitigate both adequately.
How about the usual truck traffic, though?
Yeah. Yeah, we, and I, we didn't speak, um, to that in, in detail, but I can follow up with the Town Engineer and get more detailed response on that.
I think I, I'd like a little bit more information on, of the, uh, Town's position relative to-
Yeah, and then perhaps our engineer can take a look at that as well, and we can have a-
There is some urgency on this issue, right-in, right-out, for the development?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure what I just heard about the M E P A process, but if you're gonna, uh, suggest to us that we wait until the M E P A process is done before you close your hearing, then, um, that throws the urgency out the window.
Yeah. I, I didn't necessarily say that we had to wait for the M E P A process. Um, I, I'm gonna have to go back and look at what we've done in historical, um, projects, whether or not M E P A, we were able to come up with a, uh, a condition that depending on, 'cause M E P A could come back and it may alter the site altogether, right? So, you have to come back with site plan modifications, correct?
Yes, yes. And we would expect that that would be, obviously, required if they did come back like that.
You're proceeding at your own risk.
Sure.
We've done, Mr. Chair, we've done both in the past. Developers have different perspectives or different desires. So, traditionally, the Planning Board has done both in the past, and we can certainly have a condition if the Planning Board wishes either way. So, it's really a pleasure for the Planning Board.
Unlike conservation, where that one truly ties directly into a lot of the site plan, we're hesitant to go forward with any decision prior to their having a, a decision themselves. So, um, not necessarily the case with M E P A, though.
Okay, I was just, um, um, thinking about Mr. Rao's comment that he would, would like to hear from M E P A before you make a decision on South Street, so.
From my perspective, I'd rather go to M E P A with the local permits in hand showing the Town's support, okay? It makes it easier for the state, uh, officials to review it. If it, if it's a much larger project, that's more of a, you know, a regional type project, I think the circumstances might be different. But for something like this with limited, uh, state approvals required, I, that would be my preference to go forward with local approvals.
If they come back with something that creates some ambiguity, you're gonna have to come back.
We'd have to come back.
Yeah, okay.
So, I think the question that was brought up by Mr. Jerry is, based on the last meeting, the resp- the, the opinion was that truck traffic on Route, on, uh, South Street should be minimized at, at, at most, right? So, to not have truck access on South, coming from South Street is something that you're looking for a decision on.
We're looking for the ability to exit during non-peak hours with the delivery trucks, um, onto South Street so that they can go from South Street to Route nine to four ninety-five, uh, back to Bristol Road Island where they, where they, where their, their terminals are.
You're not gonna enter from South Street with the trucks?
And, and they're talking, those are car carriers as well, and not just delivery?
Just the, that's the car carriers.
Well, I didn't know if you were talking like parts, you know, you have, you have other delivery-type materials they're gonna show up on there, right?
No, my understanding is you have one parts truck per day that comes out of Subaru of New England and comes to the dealership. They have a fleet of trucks that go out to the dealerships, so they can control the hours in the route, uh, just like they do for the car carriers.
But those aren't, those are like-
Those are vans.
Yeah, vans, they're not.
Like an Amazon, yeah.
Correct.
Right. Right. So, and approximately how many car carriers are you anticipating at any given, uh, give it, give me a large number, right?
I think we're talking about two a week.
Two a week?
Yeah.
And they, do they generally come in spaced, or they generally, you get two in the same day, or?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Clemmie, so we can control that. We went to the, uh, zoning board. We, we committed to not have them come in at, uh, what was it, uh, seven to nine in the morning, and committed not to have them between four and six going off S- South Street. So, if they did come in at those ti- hours, we would push them off to Route nine. But those hours, we will not go out. We own the trucks, we- We own the trucks, we manage the trucks and we can control that.
Just for clarity, the trucks would be entering from the Route Nine with cars and exiting.
Correct. All the trucks would go Route Nine, but then it'd be easy to go back four ninety-five out of the South Street exit. But we would limit it to those hours that they wouldn't be able to go there.
And there would be signage at, at the South Street, um, exit dictating when no truck traffic would take place. Uh, at, at that location, there would be signage as well, making it very clear that there wouldn't be any truck traffic exits during certain hours and that there would not be any test drives out of that, uh, out of that driveway.
And just some additional background that I wanted to add that we had discussed at the last zoning board meeting as well as Mr. Ricker had pointed out that the trucks are trying to go back to four ninety-five, they're coming from four ninety-five, so if access right turn out was not allowed and they had to come out on Route Nine, there's very few places for them to be able to turn around. Lake Street is a signal, but probably not able to U-turn there, so that leaves Grafton Street, which is a little circuitous and that is stop controlled at Route Nine, which is, uh, less ideal to come out, stop controlled at the signal at South Street, so.
Understood.
I don't want you coming out down south when signal in the avenue, I have enough trucks.
So it's Grafton?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear more clearly, are the, are the trucks going to go to Route Nine, take a right and then turn around or are they?
No, I, I was.
Back, back east, eastbound?
Eastbound.
Eastbound, they would be going eastbound, so they would have, if they were not allowed to exit onto South Street at all, they would have to come out onto Route Nine and find another way back eastbound, which would be U-turning or turning around.
The truck would be exiting and has to cross two lanes of traffic to take an eastbound back to the four ninety-five?
No, sir, I, I'll, so if they're not able to come out onto South Street, the trucks after they've delivered their vehicles would have to go back out going westbound and have to find a way to turn around so they can get back to four ninety-five. If they're able to do the turn inside the site, come out South Street and then they could take the left onto Route Nine going back down to four ninety-five, that just eliminate.
The car carrier's gonna have to come out and cross multiple lanes of traffic to get to that turn.
Just like anybody else would though.
Yes.
It, it's actually not three lanes of traffic.
We went from no traffic to now we've got egress.
That's right. There's two left turn lanes there.
So let's, let's wait till I open up the public comment.
But it is a right turn maneuver, you're not crossing left turning lanes, it's, it's turning into the lane that you need.
And there are two left turn lanes at that?
Yes. Okay. Mr. Thomas, you have any other questions?
My only question I brought up earlier, so I guess we'll just wait and see what happens from here on up.
Okay.
Mr., anybody else on the board have any other questions?
No.
All right. I don't have any questions at this time. This is a public hearing, does anyone in the public wish to be heard?
Chicago Land Mariner, seven hundred and thirty drive. Um, I, I guess just to sort of put a cap on this whole thing, cause I don't wanna go on and on. We keep getting moves from one meeting to the next, to the next, and every time we inch a second forward, right? We went from no track tra- no truck traffic, we wanted the South Street entrance on Route Nine, DOC tells, no, we can't do that. Well, if, if you listen to the traffic report, it's a small amount of traffic, why not put it on Route Nine? Must be something there that they want us to put it on South Street. We, we now have egress, it, it's just inch after inch after inch and this is just getting worse. So we're not getting our, our, our issues addressed, we're not being heard, we're not being accounted for. I don't know what else we're supposed to do, I don't know how you want us to communicate this, I'm not sure what to do from here. Please help me understand how I can get that, that help.
Okay. So currently, we have a ZBA decision that addressed the entrance and exit from South Street. Initially, it was supposed to be both directions, ZBA decided, uh, right in, right out only.
Mm-hmm, understood.
So what was being proposed today is the right in, right out. Um, the only additional thing that they brought up to us today, which was in conflict of what the traffic engineer last meeting said about trying to minimize traffic, traffic, the, the right in traffic for truck traffic, is to allow the truck traffic, but during limited timeframe.
ZBA allowed that.
And the ZBA allowed that.
MDM said no traffic, the ZBA said.
It's the MDA, and I, and that's why I think we need a little bit more time to look back at the MDA, uh, uh, the, the peer reviewers' response to that and, uh, maybe we can have them come and, and, and maybe clarify that point for us.
So in the la- in the last meeting though, when we brought that up here, you were the one that actually was making the point about having a way that it, it would have to force the traffic to Route Nine to go right.
And although I am the chairman, not everything goes the way that I wanted to, okay? Um, I have our opinion as to what I would like and whether or not that opinion can go forward based on all the other things that happened with all kinds of site plan review, it's, 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 it's rights of the owners of the properties and there's a lot of things that get put into the calculus. My opinion was I would prefer to have a particular set of circumstances happen. Um, it's, it's looking like they're asking for something other than what I initially brought up. So we're evaluating that right now, um, we'll get the, um, peer reviewers' response to this new configuration and we'll get additional information relative to, um, the truck traffic. I think he was concerned with truck traffic coming down the entire length of South Street, not the truck track traffic leaving the site to go the two hundred and eighty feet to go back out to Route Nine. And that's what the clarification I need from the traffic engineer.
I would, I would almost agree, but the comment he made specifically was to have an island so that it would be forced all the, all the exiting right-hand traffic to Route Nine to take a right and prevent anybody from trying to go eastbound. And now we've lost that ground.
Well, we actually have, there is an island in, in there for the right in, right out.
That's on the entrance.
I think, I think that's a misunderstanding, I, I don't.
No, Mr. Mishaw said it in the last meeting, there would, there would be configurations where once we took a right-hand turn, there would be some sort of restriction all the way to Route Nine so that the traffic would have to go right. Now they wanna go back to Kingston, Kingston Road Island.
I know, we call that.
Here's, here's my question.
This is a misunderstanding, that, that, okay, please ask a question.
We've only ever wanted one thing, cooperation, and we, we're not asking these guys to fix this intersection. Zoning board said we can't make them, I'm not trying to make them fix it, let's not make it worse. Let's, let's not make it worse and by some reason, can we not keep chipping away at one meeting to the next? What's being given up and what's being discussed? We're trying to be good citizens, stewards, we're here, we're trying to bounce from meeting to meeting. Uh, we keep getting told one thing to a next, to the next. They told us one thing in the neighborhood meeting, another thing in the zoning board, another thing in this meeting, and now this one's even a different meeting. I, I don't know how we're supposed to, we're trying to give you the information and we're trying to give you the facts.
I think, I think we understand your position, so don't feel that you're not communicating and not, your position is not clear, it is. Just like I don't have the magic wand to make everything happen my way, there's no magic wand for the, the people that don't own, own the property to make things happen at the way they want to either. So I'm just saying, we understand what you're saying, we bounce that off of what rules and regulations that are available in front of us and we apply them to the site plan, agreed, okay? That's all we can do.
It's their, it's their property, I asked this in the last meeting during zoning board, Mr. Clemmie, we want you to fix this intersection, not make it worse. If you can do that, we support your project a hundred percent and that's all we're asking for, period, full stop. Stop trying to chop this thing into little pieces, no deliveries was no deliveries, now it's endless.
Let's not get into personal, okay? So, please direct everything through me, okay?
No, 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 I'm, I, my question, my, that, that, I realize you guys shouldn't be in the position of having to ask a landowner to do something different. That's why we asked publicly, please fix this. Thank you for your time.
Yes.
Dating on at forty-three LeBlanc Road, I am a current resident of where you guys are now and as a resident, as a neighbor now, um, I think it's a little disingenuous to tell people that you only have two trucks coming in and out a week. Um, I, I think that you need to address things like, um, tow trucks bringing in repairs and things like that. Um, those, the, the two car carriers a week aren't gonna be the only trucks that are gonna be coming in and out of this site. So if we're gonna have trucks coming in, we need to protect the neighbors currently, your, your new neighbors. We're not just protecting them from two car carriers a week, so I hope that you keep that in mind, that there's gonna be tow trucks that are bringing in repairs, so you cannot control just your two trucks a week. You have other trucks and there have been neighbors of mine that have called, there's police reports, numerous police reports that my neighbors unfortunately have been burdened by. Um, there's a no truck rule on Elm Street and on Bailey Road and those trucks have had tons and tons of Patrick Motors trucks that have gone up and down there, so if the decision is made to have trucks on South Street, then don't expect just two Patrick Motors truck carriers a week because there's much more involved than just two truck carriers. So please keep that in mind and be kind to these neighbors, they're a great neighbor in many, many ways, um, but there's more that comes with it than that, so please keep that in mind.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Zach Cammon, Levon, thirty-two Burnwood Drive in Shrewsbury. Just wondering if you could clarify the delivery truck times, you mentioned, um, no deliveries between seven and nine and four and six. So would deliveries be made or truck traffic be between nine AM and four PM? Or would there be anything prior to seven AM or anything after six PM?
Please.
Mr. Chairman, through the chair, we had talked about the neighbors when we had a neighborhood meeting that we weren't gonna, you get the trash trucks, that you wouldn't pick up the trash and they wanna go down South Street, we're gonna funnel all that traffic out Route Nine. So the car carriers would be the ones going out between nine and four, but the tow trucks, the trash trucks will funnel all to, towards Route Nine.
Between nine and four?
So he's, he's looking.
After seven, after seven thirty, we had said that in the meeting, we had said that in the neighborhood meeting and it's documented, we said after seven thirty, the, the, um, trash trucks.
AM.
Seven thirty of trash trucks, car carriers between.
No, I anticipated, um, car carriers after four PM.
After six PM.
Going on South Street, but if the car carriers are there, they would go off on Route Nine. If they came at eight thirty in the morning, they wouldn't be go out South Street, they would come in, um, they would go out Route Nine. But we would go ahead and monitor it and keep them between nine and four.
Right, but you're not anticipating late night delivery of truck, of, of vehicles?
No.
Nothing prior to seven AM?
No trash trucks, no.
Car carriers?
Car carriers, if the car carriers come in, they'll go out and deliver, the cars are gonna go out Route Nine. If they do come in, they will go out Route Nine, they won't go out South Street.
Okay, between seven and nine, but are we gonna be dealing with car deliveries prior to seven AM?
No.
No, okay, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, I, oh, sir, I, with the mask, I can't tell.
My name is Cajun Hall, uh, I'm a resident on South Street itself. Uh, again, this is my first hearing and I've also written an email to the planning board regarding the concerns persistently on South Street. Um, I, so I presume everybody knows even South Street today's, uh, there's a lot of traffic, uh, back and forth throughout the day. Um, there is really hard for police to enforce traffic laws on that street because there's no space for them to stand during the day or even force or have any traffic situations issued. Uh, people are constantly going over speed, I know that is not maybe jurisdiction of this board, but allowing any traffic on South Street is gonna add to that burden of residents that are residing on South Street today. Uh, half of the times we have to be careful with my wife and kids on the road that when trying to enter the driveway, people are just trying to stream roll from behind. No one drives the car at thirty speed limit, that's posted on the South Street. I know Massachusetts doesn't have a statute today to have any camera or speed, uh, uh, catching today, but, uh, but I can assure watching cars, no one drives at thirty speed limit on that street throughout the day. And just, um, I would like to request the board, I mean, at the very worst, uh, we should not allow any eighteen-wheelers or trucks on South Street. Uh, just from the perspective that, um, as mentioned, um, I, I know they, they gave some timings that it might not be between four and six in the night, but even one in the night, trucks going up and down South Street just affects people living on that street. Uh, it does count, uh, noise pollution, uh, the roads are bumpy, so you can feel that vibrations while you're sleeping in your house when trucks go back and forth, so this is my request, I think we should be really careful allowing truck traffic on that street at any time rather than the time suggested by the gentleman here, because it's, even today, it's really hard to enforce traffic laws on there and I don't see how we're gonna enforce the timings which are suggested here, that it would be, I, I don't see anyone will be enforcing that. Uh, it will be only the residents there facing this problem day in, day out by the decision made by here, by the board.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I think I saw another hand, is there another person wish to be heard? Yes, Mr. Carter.
Yeah, Chris Kirk, forty-two Westwood Road, could we see the, uh, the, the plan for the property? Could you indicate what the boundaries of the property are?
Then the total boundaries are not shown on this plan.
I have another exhibit that shows.
We'll, we'll pull up another exhibit.
Okay.
That's the total parcel, which is approximately twenty-five acres.
Uh, there is, uh, located on this parcel, a historic building, Luther Goddard House and Shop. He was one of the first, he was the first manufacturer of, of mechanical watches in the United States. And I was wondering, is the applicant proposing to move or to preserve that building?
The house at seven oh one or seven thirteen, sir?
It's a little white house on Route Nine.
Yeah, the, the house is in pretty much disrepair and so we're gonna get through the boards and then we're gonna go the historical commission and walk them through and, and go through that process.
Of?
But we're, we're probably demo listening to building.
Demo.
If you, if you want it, I'll give it to you, you can come and take it, I'll give it to any, we'll, we'll give it away to anybody in town that wants it. It's pretty, pretty much disrepair.
Okay, is, uh, is, is, has the applicant, uh, already submitted, uh, uh, made an application to, to, to MEPA for review of the project?
Not yet.
Not yet?
They just notified.
They'll probably pick up the issue of any historic structures on the property.
I was, I was wanting to ask that, what do I do? Okay. They would, and they would have approval over this project, yes?
Jurisdiction.
They'd comment, I'm not saying they'd have approval over it.
Okay.
They'd comment.
They'd comment, okay. All right, thank you, okay, thank you.
Uh, can you just verify or confirm, uh, if the trucks are gonna, the trucks are gonna come in from Route Nine and up South Street, correct?
No, no, they're not gonna come.
They're gonna come in from Route Nine or?
No, they, they entered the property on Route, on Route Nine, at the Route Nine entrance. And our way of suggesting is that we'd like them to be able to exit South Street, take a right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Take a right on that two hundred and eighty-foot swath of South Street.
Okay, I understand now, I, I thought that they weren't gonna give you a curb cut on Route Nine, that's not true.
There was discussion, if I could, Mr. Chairman, there was discussion at the previous, uh, hearings about why don't you have two entrances and exits on Route Nine? Um, that, uh, question was asked of DOT and answered.
Okay, so it's just the exit on Route Nine, not, not from, okay, that is my question, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wish to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I want to take a motion to continue the public hearing.
To February second?
February second.
This woman here has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, please.
From twenty-nine Burnwood Drive, so we just, uh, heard that they, they are proposing, new propose, so kind of like have trucks on South Street exit. So, excuse me, and the gentleman mentioned the nine two four, so as I know, school bus, uh, for high school, school bus runs from six thirty to seven. I got my daughter's bus six forty-five, so, and in the afternoon, this afternoon bus from two to four for elementary school, middle school and high school. So, uh, I think we, I would like to read the radar, so while I think about it, you're gonna have trucks get out of, on South Street. Cause in, um, Burnwood Drive, I know there is a bunch of. Because in Burnwood Drive, I know there is a bunch of kids, and in Maplewood, there is a bunch of kids too. So the, the, the school bus may be affected by the trucks.
Thank you, you make a good point. Okay. Now I want to take a motion...
Mr. Chairman, do you know if the school buses go out to Route Nine in that section of road?
I do not know, does anybody on the planning department on this?
I don't think there's a school bus stop.
And people on South Street, they, they, they have different limits.
There's forty-five school buses that go through that intersection both ways.
And they do stop at that apartment complex on South Street, on the southern portion of South Street.
Yeah, across the...
Maplewood?
Ashwood Crossing.
Yeah, Ashwood.
Ashwood Crossing, yeah.
Yeah, so it's the other side of the street.
Yep, yep.
If I could, the comment was brought up. I think a similar comment was brought up at zoning board, and the reason the seven to nine, the four for six, there might be a very short intensity for things like schools, but generally the bulk of the rest of the peak hour traffic for the rest of the intersection falls between the seven to nine, four to six, so that's...
Okay, understood.
For those hours.
Okay, motion to continue the public hearing.
One more second?
Yes, please.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the proposed auto dealership cycling approval of Tru Treewood LLC, seven oh one Boston Turnpike until Thursday, February second at seven PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And once again, I still have more to go through, so if you could keep your conversations low, I appreciate it. Okay, our next public hearing is a continued public hearing for One Greenbrier Drive, Over Fifty-Five Housing Development Site Plan Approval and Special Permit, Cypress Avenue Development LLC. Location is One Greenbrier Drive and one-six-nine R Gulf Street. Proponents present.
That was twice last.
Hey, I don't, you're the right judge, I don't set the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Killed it, absolutely killed it.
And I'm sure you did a great job.
Okay, if you would like to give us some updates as to where you're at.
By the way, I'm Lawrence Rosenberg, I'm the managing partner of Cypress Avenue Development, the applicant.
And John Grenier, J.M. Grenier Associates, I am the, no, no problem. I'm the civil engineer working on the project. So where we are at, I, I know that you watched the conservation commission hearings.
Believe it or not, John, I did not watch it.
You missed it? It was the best one!
I know, it was the holidays and I just, it got away from me.
No questions, it was great.
Oh, okay.
No, so conservation is fine with the plans. We, at the time, we had, they reviewed the plans, we had plans into Graves to review for you folks. And they just wanted to make sure that there were no changes from any of the Graves review, they were fine. So since then, we have gotten the review from Graves Engineering, we've gotten a clean bill of health. They just did a final comment letter.
Yeah, I think you received it today, yeah.
Yeah, no, if you look, it's no comment, no comment, you know, they're, they're fine. So as you know, the, the holdup with conservation was that we had to do that flood study. That was submitted to them, you know, a month before their previous meeting, so they're fine with that. As you know, we, we reduced the total unit count by twenty percent, we started at sixty-six. We went down to sixty, now we're at fifty-three. So it was a total of thirteen units removed. So I know we had done an analysis of how this project related to other projects that had been built, and it was the least dense of any, now we're even less dense than, than any other project in town. So really, that's the long and short of it.
So did you get an indication from conservation as to when they're expecting? You think you'll be done in another month or so?
No, no, they're... What, what happened is they were prepared to close the hearing. Town engineer Andy suggested that they hold it open just in case Graves came up with something that would require us to make a change so that they didn't approve a plan that ended up different from the one you, that you would end up approving.
Right.
So they're prepared to sign off at the next meeting, as far as we understand.
And Chris, did you hear, because Andy had told us that he was going to speak to...
Yes, I, I did, and, and they're likely to close at the next hearing, so...
Okay, so yeah, he just said...
They are satisfied with the plans, they were just waiting for the Graves period review, which we have, so...
Does anyone have questions from the board, Mr. Rao?
Uh, no questions from him.
Mr. Jerry?
I have none.
Mr. Rodolakis?
Did we hear back from Jeezy Ed?
We had submitted, we had done everything that they said that they had suggested. We reduced the length of the two-to-one slope, we put in, I think it's supposed to have a minimum of a six-foot wide leveling area, we have an eight-foot wide leveling area, and then that goes to a three-to-one slope down to the backyards. So we had done everything that, did we get something in writing from them? No, not to my knowledge. But we followed everything that they had suggested.
Those are these issues with slopes, if we can have something confirming that they're okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I was going to suggest that as well.
Okay. In the retaining walls?
In the retaining walls, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Steve? Mr. Thomas?
Yep.
No, like I said, the, the retaining walls are certainly the biggest concern.
Yeah, well, we don't have any, there's no retaining walls.
Oh, I mean the, well, the slope analysis and all of that, so that was, that's been kind of a talking point I bring it up quite often, so...
Yeah.
We definitely want to make sure that that's square.
Okay.
All right, uh, public hearing, does anyone in the audience wish to be heard?
It's the benefit of being last.
We have one person in the audience, and his hand is not raised, so...
What's wrong with us?
Of course it is. You had your chance, yours.
More attrition. Are you going to continue this?
Yes.
Yes. So I want to take a motion to continue the public hearing.
I move that we continue the public hearing until February second, twenty-twenty-three at seven PM on the Greenbrier Drive.
Because conservation hasn't signed off yet.
And I don't have a Jeezy Ed confirmation.
And in the, in the meantime, could we get a draft decision maybe prepared so that we don't have to wait another month after that?
I can...
Yeah, we can, we can draft a decision for the next meeting as well.
Okay.
And I'll relay that information at concom as well.
Okay.
Right, so I, I move that we continue the public hearing on the Greenbrier Drive Site Plan Approval and Special Permit until February second, twenty-twenty-three at seven PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that does it for our meetings, we do have new business, our first item of business, what's that?
The first one's me, I think.
MBTA Communities?
Oh, no, no, I was looking at...
What's that?
I was looking at Cypress Avenue, it's in a plan...
Oh, do I have an old, I, I'm sorry, I don't have a new agenda. Oh, I'm just, thanks. Yes, so we have our first new business, Cypress Avenue Review and Endorsed Definitive Plans. So you have my last for us to sign, is that what that is?
Yeah, that's the cul-de-sac that was approved.
That's your frontage.
That's your frontage, right. And we just got to sign those off, yeah. So what we'll do is we'll take care of that after...
That's great.
Close the hearings.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Second item of business, MBTA Communities, Mr. McGoldrick.
So I have an update on that. I provided a, an email again late this afternoon, I apologize for the lack of punctuality. But I also have what is a draft action plan form. This is a requirement from the MBTA Communities. It'll be due on January thirty-first. So what I'm looking for really is just to put this in front of the planning board for their knowledge. Looking for feedback on what we've submitted for that draft action plan form. As you'll see in the memo, I think this is really just a, you know, overview, largely a kind of thirty thousand foot view for the state compliance. Our recommendation is that a, a more robust community local plan developing our strategy for complying with the MBTA community zoning mandate would be beneficial. We have until December of twenty-twenty-four to, to adopt that zoning, to remain in compliance. So there is a fair bit of amount of time to do that. And then the other recommendation is to, to review the feasibility of utilizing forty R to meet those zoning requirements, which is separate zoning in the MGLs that allows for high-density housing, which is right in line with the MBTA requirements with additional affordability requirements. And the benefits will be twofold of not only meeting the MBTA zoning, finding where that zone is appropriate, but the forty R comes with fiscal benefits of, once you implement the zone, you get a one-time payment, and then when a project is proposed and building permits are issued, depending upon the number of units that are actually built on the site, it's three thousand dollars per unit directly to the community. So there's the fiscal benefits as well as the obvious benefits of providing additional affordable housing opportunities. So just wanted to put that in front of the board, comments to be received preferably by the twenty-seventh. This will also be before the select board on January twenty-fourth with the same request for feedback on our draft action plan.
So this is the grant, essentially this is all about the graft and transition.
Correct.
Why don't we just amend the Route Twenty Olae district?
Yeah, and that, those are things that we can, I think during that planning process of how we want to address this, that's certainly...
This is basically just the, it's, it's kind of a, it's a, it's a, it gives the state an understanding that this, a level of plan that's being...
Right.
Introduced, it just, it's not a definitive plan, it's just to say that we're doing something.
No, no, but I, I think it makes sense anyhow to amend the Route Twenty Olae district for a lot of reasons, just based on what we're seeing.
Okay, any other questions or comments? So take some time to do that, and if you have any questions or amendments or anything, feedback, send it back to Mr. McGoldrick, that'd be great. Our next item of business is reappointment of delegates to, a delegate in alternate to the C, Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, or CMRPC. I'd like to ask the current members to continue on with what they're doing, so Mr. Rao and Mr. Rodolakis, if you would can graciously take that appointment and run with it, I would appreciate it. Do we, I don't think we have to have a motion for that, or?
Yeah, it's a good idea to, to do a motion.
I move that we reappoint Mr. Rodolakis and Mr. Rao to the CMRPC Commission for Fiscal Year Twenty-three.
Do I have a second?
Happily, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And our final new business is just the announcement that our next, our next meeting is a special meeting for January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, for the continuation of the Beal property. This will be currently, it is at Town Hall. It is not going to be at the high school, so it will be at Town Hall, so please be mindful of that, and that's all I have. I want to take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we conclude this evening's public hearings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.